Anyone's here for any of the public hearings? If you'd like to sign in, there's a sign-in sheet there on the table. And then, in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. So we'll take roll call. We are all here except for Michael Ray Jeffries. Is there any public comment from the board?
Just reiterate my question and see if there was anything we can do about moving that flag over so that everybody in the room can see it during the Pledge of Allegiance.
It was sent to the people in charge of this building. I will follow up on it again.
Okay, thanks. I just noticed when people sit over there, they don't know what we're pledging allegiance to because they can't see it. Thanks.
Is there any public, from the public, not related to any of the agenda items? All right, seeing none, we'll move right into our first appointment. It's the introduction of our new town council. I guess we'll put that off. We'll go into a request for a de minimis change for Unitil at 357 Electric Avenue.
Good evening, everybody. Jamie Rowe from Whitman and Bingham Associates representing Unitil. I do have some plans, if you'd like me to pass them around.
Sure. We can share as well.
There is one in your, in all of your binders.
I've actually read the brief. The little ones are fine.
Oh, it's on the back. All right, I see this, there's some with the...
I'll give you the 11 by 17.
Yeah.
I have them highlighted.
I don't know if he's coming or not, so.
We got two here for this.
Oh, supposed to be two?
Did you leave one for Michael?
I did, yes.
Thank you. Now we have two.
Mr. Chairman.
I do have larger scale copies of those I had to read.
Jeff a copy since he's...
I know you don't have a lot of room.
Right. So, we have a proposed change that we'd like to make in the field. And everybody remembers the pole storage and transformer storage area. It was a very hot topic for everybody, and everybody came to a compromise solution to this which best fits the project and the property. The front page that you have highlighted in yellow basically tells the tale of how it was approved, designed and approved. It was approved with a catch basin in the pole storage area, file left. That catch basin discharged to a manhole which discharged to a double catch basin in the transformer storage area. That double basin had the petrol plug, petrol barrier in it. And then, it had an overflow to a 2,000 gallon septic tank, tight tank alarmed. And then, if it wasn't alarmed and it didn't overflow into the tank, the discharge goes through the petrol barrier and then discharges basically to the outfall on the right-hand side. The second page is how we would like to construct it. In concept, in design, it's the exact same thing. What we're going to do is separate and have two independent systems, one for the pole storage, one for the transformer storage. The drainage design highlighted in red is the change. Again, same catch basin in the pole storage area, goes to a manhole like before, goes to a second manhole. That manhole will have the petrol plug, petrol barrier, and the overflow to a 2,000 gallon tank as well. And then, if it doesn't overflow into the tank, it goes through the plug, it goes to the same discharge as before. The transformer storage area stays the same. The concern was, the manufacturer basically said, "I'm a little uncomfortable with all the flow that's going through one petrol barrier. I'd rather you have two." We separated the system, and it's gonna, it's gonna function the same as designed and approved. That's the only change. I hope you agree. It's a de minimis change, and we can start construction this week.
What was the motivation behind the change?
The motivation behind the change is to do the right thing. We contract, we contacted the manufacturer. This is the design. We gave them a six to eight week lead time. Want to make sure you have the product, want to make sure you still agree with the design. The engineer who we dealt with was no longer with that company, so we went to another engineer, and the owner at the same time, had a few meetings. The owner basically told us, very uncomfortable with the amount of flow going through one petrol barrier, we want you to split it, it will function better, and it's the right thing to do. Unitil agreed, and so they had me redesign it and come back to you. That's the only, only thing behind it. We think it's gonna function, the manufacturer thinks it's gonna function better.
I have a question.
Sure.
The outlet to the rapid area?
Yep.
The outlet invert has dropped by half a foot.
Correct.
I don't see any change in the contours. I mean, two-foot contours, it may or may not show up.
We had, we had plenty of drop in there. We actually went out and we shot it. What, the problem is, is we're trying to retrofit a design to half a site that's already constructed. And we needed four inches from the inlet into the petrol barrier to the petrol barrier itself. That's why we located the new tank down near the transformer storage area, because we had the pitch there. But in order to get that pitch and have it function right, we had to drop the invert a little bit. We checked it, it's fine. We also submitted the plans to the Conservation Commission, and I received an email from Matt Morrow stating he reviewed it, and they're fine with the change as well.
Has every review engineer reviewed this change?
They have not.
I have an extra copy, can we give it to...
You certainly can.
Sure.
Requests for de minimis change are generally not distributed to the peer review engineer.
Okay.
But he's...
I, I agree, but that's, that's the reasoning why it hadn't been to him previously.
Okay.
And just to recap our previous review of this, I had brought up the limited cover over the inlet, the outlet tank. I don't know if we recall that, but that tank was the question, because it was quite close to, invert is 505.5.
All right. Would you like to, oh, sorry, reiterate that concern to the applicants?
Oh, well, I mean, your previous application, that, that specific tank was of a concern to me because it had such a limited cover over the inlet and outlet.
Yes.
And it just, the previous one actually didn't even show a slope or length on the pipe, and it does now, which is good.
Do we have any comments from our review engineer? I don't, you've had all of 30 seconds to review it.
Good thing I'm billing by the hour, right? No, I, as Jamie pointed out, it's basically, it's following the same intent. There were certainly two separate pipes. Now the two pipes, even though they were in the same trench, they're being separated farther apart, so they're doing the same purpose, serving the same purpose. And with the second petrol plug in the tank that is to the north of the, of the transformer storage area, I mean, in my opinion, two plugs is better than one. You get less flow going through each one, and each one can, can serve a dedicated purpose, and I have no problem with it, no concerns about it.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for casting this long, Matt.
Yes. And so the new tank is also alarmed like the previous one?
Correct.
Okay.
Same design for both systems.
Yep. Just a little curious, why not one tank and two plugs?
We couldn't make it. We couldn't make it work.
Couldn't make it work, okay. All right.
Again, we're trying to redesign based upon a site that's almost constructed.
Ah.
And we didn't want to have to, you know, reconstruct.
Rip a part up, yeah, yeah, I gotcha. Gotcha, okay.
All right. All right, if there's no more, is there any more questions from the board?
None for me?
Nope. All right, I'd entertain a motion to approve...
Move that we accepted is documented as a change called...
De minimis change.
De minimis change.
Second. Oh, sorry, either one of us.
Who would second?
Yeah, Matthew seconded.
Matthew seconded. Any more discussion? Anyone to put, all in favor?
Yes, aye.
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 Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is town council here, still? We're just gonna take one second to see if town council's in the building to introduce themselves.
And he is, sitting in the dark hallway.
All righty, we'll move into our next appointment, which would be the introduction of our new town council.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Adam Costa. Had office hours this afternoon from 4:00 to 7:00, and apparently thought your meeting was at 7:00 because books all at the 7:00 o'clock, so I apologize. So I think the opportunity presented itself tonight, since I was here at Town Hall, to end your meeting and introduce myself. My firm, Me, Teller, and Costa, was appointed town council effective July 1st. We've been representing the town for a few months now. We've had an opportunity to meet with your various public officials, a couple of members of your board as well. What I just referenced is maybe an important talking point, and that is, regular office hours, something that has been part of our model in many communities that we've represented and continue to represent here in Massachusetts. And the idea behind office hours is that, once a month, and during this sort of ramping up period in Lunenburg, we've been doing it more frequently than that, we will have set office hours here at Town Hall. Usually, a three to four hour segment when we're here at Town Hall, and Heather Lemieux generally has sent out invites to the chairs of the various boards, which can be circulated amongst the board members through an online app, I think it's called Doodle or something like that. Gives you an opportunity to sign up for a time slot, they're 15-minute increments, when you can come in and you can sign up for multiple back-to-back increments if you've got more to discuss than can be accomplished in 15 minutes. And have an opportunity to meet with me and to talk about whatever's on your mind or whatever issues might be pressing. The idea is that I could meet with members, of course, one-on-one. I can't, nor can you run afoul of the open meeting law requirement, so I can't conduct a meeting with a quorum of the board. But I can meet with individual members of a board, other, other public officials, staff members, which I've done already, and an opportunity to not only give you the chance to get familiar with me, but to answer any questions you might have, and to really try and get ahead of problems. We found in the communities where we began to institute this about 10 years ago, that it's really given us an opportunity through being more proactive to get a handle on things before they get to be too troublesome. And it's not, not a fail-proof solution, but we've seen a market decrease in litigation in the many communities that we've worked in prior to our, comparing the situation prior to our appointment as council to the situation, say, two or three years later, after we became town council and began this, this process. It gives staff, it gives board members an opportunity to ask questions they might not otherwise ask until it was too late, until they've been sued, until their decisions have been appealed, and then we're, we're more reactive in defending those decisions than anything. So, so that's one aspect of our representation. Additionally, we're certainly welcome, happy to come to meetings of the board upon request. We have a component of our contract with the town is that we will attend a certain number of meetings of various boards and commissions on a month-to-month basis as necessary. So again, that's something that you should coordinate through your town manager, Heather Lemieux. But if you feel that there is an item that's up and coming on your agenda that you could use some assistance with, and you don't think it's enough to have a conversation by telephone or via email or at office hours prior to that meeting, certainly I'm available to attend your meeting and to assist with that process. If there are matters that are in litigation, whether they're overtly threatened litigation or pending litigation, and you have a desire to discuss those, you have some limited authority to discuss those matters in executive session. So once again, if we have a conversation far enough in advance, I can guide you through an appropriate agenda item for that executive session and can meet with you either at the start or the end of your meeting to enter into executive session and to, to talk about that litigation with you. My offices are in Newburyport and Millis. My firm has two offices, but I live over in Western Nashua, right on the Pepperell Line, so I'm only about 25 minutes from, from here. So, can be, can be reached by email, office line, cell number, all of that I give out openly, and you can, if you don't already have it, you can certainly get it through, through Heather. With that, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions or concerns you might have.
I don't have any questions at this time, but I have taken advantage just recently of the open hours. I think it's a great opportunity, not only for this board, but for every volunteer in town to get more information. I'd encourage everyone to take advantage of it.
I would like to welcome you to the town and appreciate your, your, your coming up with office hours. I would, however, like to find out what the snafu was. I showed up for my appointment, there were four people waiting previously. Not your fault, I don't know whose fault it was actually, but it's important that you have office hours. It's very important to us that you're available, and, and I very much appreciate that you do have them. We do have some scheduling things to work out. And this, I think, was your, only your second set of office hours.
I think it was my, my third, maybe my fourth. And we've had no issue the previous three sessions. Today's, we had, we had an issue. There was a double booking for one 15-minute segment. In another instance, it appears that the booking was for a later segment, but was on the doodle as an earlier segment, so I'm gonna talk to Heather Lemieux tomorrow and try to work through some of the logistics. She thought, and I agreed, that this doodle link was a good opportunity electronically to try to give individuals an opportunity to sign up for slots, but we had some issues with that today. So, as you say, it's, it's important to be here, but it's also important, I, you know, part of the reason why we've tried to structure these hours, at least the past two or three or four sessions, at different time periods during the day. So the last session I had was two weeks ago, we did it in the morning from 9:00 to 12:00. Today's was from 4:00 to 7:00. I think the prior session was mid-afternoon. The idea being to give different individuals who have different schedules an opportunity to meet with me. Some individuals can do it in the evenings because they work full-time jobs and they're volunteers. In other cases, I was trying to meet with staff, and staff of, of course, are here during business hours. So, we're gonna try to continue this sort of flexible schedule, but it's equally as important, as you say, that people show up for their appointed time slots and that they're not there only to find out that somebody else has taken that time slot or that they're on the agenda later, because they've, we've all got busy lives, they've got busy lives, and they, they ought to be able to show up a few minutes before their time slot, get in and get out. So, we'll work through those, those technical difficulties and try to smooth things out for the next session, which will be sometime in mid-October, I would suspect.
Excellent. Work in progress. I thank you, again.
The important part is that he's there and available.
Exactly, definitely.
So, we'll, from our side of the table, we'll work on getting that worked out, so. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, we're excited. Okay.
All right. Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Nice meeting you.
Same here.
Just as a point of order, do we need to amend the roll call, because Michael was tardy?
Yeah, Michael is showing up.
Really?
I'd like to apologize for my tardiness.
The minutes will reflect when he entered the meeting.
Okay, just so he doesn't have to mullonize for anything, for any reason. Okay. All righty, so we'll move into our first public hearing. It's a continuance of the application for a six-megawatt solar farm at 994 Northfield Road.
Good evening. Thank you for having us back. We're here tonight for the continued hearing. Hopefully, we're gonna be able to address all of your questions. Substantively, I have the applicant and Nextstamp here to do that. I just want to make a couple of opening remarks, and then, after their presentation, after you've heard from the public, and before you close the hearing, which you're hoping, that, we're hoping we will do this evening, I'd also like the opportunity to just come back and briefly sum up with a couple of closing comments. I think a couple of the things we took away from the board the last time that they really wanted to hear about are a couple of things I just want to highlight. The board was rightfully concerned about the feedback from the abudders and encouraged us to do some more outreach. We did do that. There was a meeting onsite with many of the immediate abudders, some of whom are here this evening, and I'm sure we'll hear from them. Nextstamp will address substantively what went on at that meeting, but I wanted the board to know we did hear you, and we did reach out to have further conversations with the abudders. Another concern that I heard expressed by the board, at least some members of the board last time, was a concern that the board did not want to be perceived as being anti-business, and, and I appreciate that. And I know Lunenburg right now is globally looking at economic opportunities and business opportunities, and I, I think this fits with that, and I think this is a good one. And I want to focus the board and focus their attention on what business we're talking about, because this isn't just a solar company like Nextstamp coming into town for its own economic gain. Certainly, they have an incentive, and that's part of what's happening with Nextstamp. But this is a town resident who is a taxpayer here, a town resident who has a business here, who is operating a recreational business, the golf course, and as he presented to you the last time, this is an opportunity for him to use about 25% of his land to help ensure the economic viability and stability of the other 75% or so of his land. So, it's, it's a local business trying to continue its business and, at the same time, to preserve a great deal of open space. I don't know how many of you remember what was going on up there, or talked about going on up there in the 80s, but before the real estate market collapsed, there was a proposal to put hundreds and hundreds of residential homes up there. This is not that. This is just roughly 25% of the square footage of the land up there that is going to hopefully preserve the rest of the land up there for the foreseeable future. So I hope that the board keeps that in mind, and I'll turn it over to our team here to address the substantive questions that you had for us the last time. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Alan Clapp. I'm the Development Manager from Nextstamp. And I'd like to go through three or four issues to highlight from our last meeting and tell you what progress that we've made on that, and then, I'll be handing the presentation to Rob Oliver, the engineer, who will go into the details of the design, the changes that were made to the plans that you see before you. As Bob mentioned, we did have a neighborhood meeting on September 11th held at the golf course, and we personally notified it, in addition to folks learning about it from this first public hearing, we had, we notified 16 abudders, essentially the direct abudders to the south and to the west. And folks that attended, Ron Smith, Dennis Stewart, and Wayne and Christine Jackson attended, and my colleague Ethan Giles, who was with me last time, presented along with Bill Gustaf's about the project, and simply answered many, many questions about topography, about wetlands, about noise, if it was considered a heat sink, going over the DEP guideline that was discussed a little bit in a lot more detail, and the ability to talk about some of the things that the state addressed. Talked about the revised driveway and the layout. And I think what our takeaway was, is that primarily looking for some additional plantings where the screening was light, and trying to make sure that it was properly screened and not just tall telephone poles for existing trees, that we complemented that with a human scale of evergreen plantings, again, which Rob will identify. And then, some folks expressed some interest in participating in the community solar program, and I'd be happy to note that we do have a portfolio of projects that we, where we can offer residents of Lunenburg to participate in a community solar program, which is essentially a 15% discount on their rates. So, that happened September 11th. Relative to the pilot, a colleague of mine, Chris Clark, has been meeting with Harold Scheid, who's a regional tax assessor, working on behalf of the town, and also discussing this with the town manager. They have meetings, they've had meetings and have scheduled additional meetings this week with the hopes of coming to a consensus and concluding what that pilot should be, could be. And it's their goal, if they're successful this week, to present that to the Board of Selectmen next week at the, I believe, the next Thursday is their meeting. Again, that's the goal. It's, again, with any negotiation, there's no way to guarantee that that, in fact, will get concluded this particular week, but according to Chris Clark, he said they were very close. And again, with hopes to conclude that. And I think I'd just like, might to add that Nextstamp has had well over two dozen projects in the last few years in mid to the western part of the state. And we've always come to a resolution relative to a pilot with communities. It's not always easy, there's a lot of give and take, a lot of different negotiations that go through that, but we've always ended up there. And again, there's no guarantee before any negotiation, but again, it's the way we like to do business. Hopes we'll get there as well. I wanted to speak a little bit about the Unitil Interconnection Service Agreement, and there was, again, some questions if this project negatively impacted residential customers or other customers from connecting. And that is not the case. Essentially, the residential program is entirely unique and separate and independent. And actually, in a program that is now coming through the Mass policy is the SMART program, expected to be implemented beginning of 2018, they have developed a special carve-out for the residential program as well. We have received...
Sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to be clear on that. So you're saying that commercial and residential will have separate capacities and separate equipment to, through Unitil?
They're treated separately and independently by Unitil. Essentially...
So they're not combined to, to, as far as load on Unitil equipment?
They have to, you know, I think what my, wait, if I may, so you're saying that they have to have capacity for both carve-outs?
No.
They don't have to reserve capacity for both carve-outs?
There, there is plenty of capacity for the residential component of connecting into the system for solar use.
Okay.
Independent of the commercial use.
After this project is approved, or as of now?
Both, both. Essentially, the impact study that Unitil does when we apply, they tell us, and we've received this, they tell us about all the improvements that we have to do to interconnect six megawatts of power. And it's a substantial amount of improvements in the wiring, at the substation and so forth. And essentially, those improvements actually help facilitate future small connections. If there was a future larger connection similar to us, or half the size of ours, they would also have to do an impact study and get a similar report, say you need to do Y improvements, because X has already been done and paid for, so you can bring in your three megawatts of power. But essentially, the residents are independent of that, is my conclusion to you folks.
Is there a way, and again, you're, you're in this business, so you probably would know far more than I would about it, is there a way to track capacity to say how much more they can take on after they've approved projects?
There are reasonable limits where the finances become so burdensome, you really can't afford to...
Do you know if this project was on any of the previously two affected grids that were upgraded? Because I think there was one, and I think it covers the south part of the town and into Fitchburg. I'm just not sure if this was on one of those grids that was improved, or was it on the one that had nothing done to it yet?
I can't speak that, I honestly don't know.
Sorry, go ahead.
The last point is to speak to the decommissioning surety, and Rob's group has submitted a updated and completed package, essentially a letter of review and a signature from their PE that they have concurred with the bids that I made reference to, that we have received, both for the removal of the project at the end, and also the potential salvage value. And we can speak to that later in the presentation, if you want to hear from your peer reviewer on what was submitted, or whatever's best for you folks. But at least, we believe we've submitted a completed package to meet your needs as If there's no questions at this point in time, I'd continue the presentation with Rob Oliver.
Do we have any questions from the board?
I have a lot of questions, but I'll...
Do you want to wait until the engineer proposes the changes that they've made?
Correct.
And why they were done?
Thank you. I'm not going anywhere.
Thank you very much. Before you start, can you just give a brief overview of what happened at the last meeting and...
At the last, okay.
Just what, what we had requested be changed, and what you changed and why, I guess.
Well, at this point, most of the changes to the plan are direct result of the peer review comments, so there's been some changes to the tension basins. We've... We've eliminated cross-country underground drains in favor of swales, riprep swales. The major change that we talked about at the last meeting was the access point and the, the access to the project. The plan that's on the, the board now is basically the 40-scale drawing, what's in your packets of the driveway at Northfield Road, as if you recall.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sure.
Here's an extra copy for the public. Would you mind just throwing it on the table if any of the other residents want to see it? So, thank you. Thank you. Sorry.
So previously, we were accessing through a wetland here and creating a new driveway. In lieu of that, we've shifted access point to the existing driveway and an existing cart path up to a point of about here, and then we continue our driveway. So that driveway comes in over the existing driveway to the main, not the main parking area, but up to the clubhouse. There's a maintenance shed and a storage shed that we go between, where it's all paved. And then up over an existing cart path that we just need to widen a bit for our access to about here, and then we're all new. Two places at the, well, right here, these two shaded areas here and here will have temporary gravel because we can't, we have to be able to get a tractor trailer in there for deliveries. So we're creating room enough for them to swing into the site. That does require at the street, the removal of one tree. There's a 36-inch maple, which upon inspection, after we decided we were coming in at that location, is in pretty rough shape. The top part of the tree is, is pretty dead. I was told a big limb came down on a car about a year ago out of that tree. I understand scenic road, and there'll be a special permit required to remove that tree as it's in the scenic road, and that would be forthcoming. But we wanted to talk about that access before we went too far with that. So that's the biggest change to the access. So it's moved quite a ways. So the neighboring property here, the driveway is coming up right next to it in that location, we've shifted the access all the way to here. So quite a ways away from the neighbors. The other major change we made as a result of discussions here, as well as with the abutters, we've provided screening. If I may have just flipped to that page, can you see that? If I may have bring this over with me. If you flip to sheet 302. So what we were looking at was the driveway coming up through here. This sheet connects to the next page, sheet 302. So the driveway continues up here to this location. We get into the array at the top part of the site. So what we're proposing for screening at the back of the, the Smith property, right here, so we call this the southern boundary along Northfield Road, we're providing for a row of screening with evergreens and evergreen shrubs, basically at our limit of clearing. And that continues on, on sheet 303 to the corner of the property there and down, continuing southerly. So we then continue down along the property line here, and then westerly along that southern boundary. So we're providing screening along that entire southern boundary. So that was the next biggest change. There were some other smaller changes. So the drainage system I mentioned, we, there were several areas we were proposing within the array to be graded. Their experts have determined we don't actually have to do that. So we've eliminated some of the grading within the array. Street addresses have been added to the plan. And then the other big change was, at Jeff's recommendation, we added a turnaround area at the fence at the main gate where the driveway comes into the array. So if, for instance, a town vehicle comes in for an emergency and they can't, they can, they can turn around and get out of there. Those are the highlights of the changes to the plans. I can ask, I can answer any questions on the plans at this point, if you choose.
I noticed on 302, there's a considerable amount of additional panels.
Oh, yes, we did add the panels.
Did you remove any?
So in this area, there were some panels added. We had the opportunity, there was a little area there. The drainage for that, we've revised the drainage to include that area. So everything was updated. So yes, there were some panels added.
Were there any removed? Are these additional to what the previous submission was, or are these relocated?
I believe they're additional.
No, they weren't.
Were they relocated from the western edge?
So why were they relocated?
They were added, not relocated.
He just said they were relocated.
I was corrected. I apologize. I believe as a result of conversations with the Conservation Commission, we moved them away from the western edge. We did move the fence line back from, they had requested that we try and get the fence line out of the buffer zone in areas where we could. So that happened as well, as a result of that change.
I thought they asked at the cons comm whether or not you could move panels, and your answer was no because there was ledge?
There's an area up there. I believe we're staying away from that ledge face.
So has it been a one-for-one removal versus the new panels?
Is that change listed? I'm sorry.
The, the size remains the same.
It doesn't, I have the old plans and these new plans.
Yeah, me too.
And there's no difference in the number of panels on the plan, except for the addition. Doesn't look like they've been moved at all. Looks like they've just been added.
Well, there's definitely some of them have been removed because if you look at the setback, the 100-foot buffer zone-
This is the new one.
On the old plans?
This is the old one.
There was a panel that was in the 100-foot buffer zone. And now, when you look at that same spot-
See any difference at all?
Yeah, there was discussion at the cons comm about moving the retention basins and the, and the clearing somewhat out of the 100-foot buffer.
Because it doesn't look like it on 201.
302 and 303.
302 and 303.
Yeah, I have a hard time believing there's not an increase in panels.
All right, well, I have some questions in regard to the buffering. So I did go out and measure the buffer along the, well, I measured the buffer from the corner of, the northwest corner of Mr. Smith's land. And then I walked the property line because it was pinned from his building of his houses, so it was easy to find the lot markers. And I walked all the way down to where it abuts the Donnie B. and Christina A. Gilmore, and these might not reflect the actual owners. So I did actually take measurements of what appeared to be the buffering along that. And along the golf course, you provide yourselves about between 120 and 180 feet of buffering. And the abutting residential neighborhood only receives as little as 50 feet of natural vegetative buffering. And it seems as though your setbacks on the south are far greater. And I know due to the sun direction that, that might affect those setbacks from the edge of clearing. For me, I'd like to see the abutters get the same consideration you're giving yourself as far as the screening. I'm not sure that, what are the heights of the proposed plantings?
I mean, evergreen plantings, we're talking two-inch caliper-ish, you know, not real large, but they're evergreens, they'll grow. I don't think it's been determined exactly what we want to do. In fact, I mean, there's a lot of existing trees there, so planting is kind of, we want it to, we don't want to plant right next to an existing tree, so we're calling out, you know, grouping.
But those are proposed within the edge of clearing?
Yes. Within the, well, within the existing tree line. We're not putting them in the, the clearing. So we're going to infill, to a degree, the existing tree line.
Yeah, when I was there, I mean, basically, everything pitches downhill towards the, basically, the corner of New West Townsend Road and Northfield Road. And I stood in the backyards of basically every abutter. And for me, I mean, 50 feet does not seem nearly enough of a vegetative buffer.
Well, I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I don't mean, don't mean to interrupt. 50 feet, there's houses on New West Townsend Road that are 400, 500, almost 600 feet away with all that space between. So I'm not sure if there's other areas that you're considering there to only be 50 feet.
Well, from the corner of, do you have a laser pointer or no? Sorry.
Basically, from, from New West Townsend Road, he's talking, I think he's speaking about the residents along Northfield Road.
Yes, basically, to where it hits a corner and then turns up. And again, you've given yourself the courtesy of nearly 200 feet of already, buffer that's already there, natural vegetation. I think that burden should lay more on the property owner than his abutters. For me, unless you're going to be planting those evergreens 15 to 20 feet tall, it's really going to have zero impact. I think the impacts to the abutters are immediate, and they should have somewhat immediate relief from that. I'm not saying that they shouldn't be able to see it. The butters I've talked to, they're both in construction. They didn't have any irrational fears. They're not going to say pilots are going to get blinded by the glare and crash into the ground. They're both in construction and familiar with the process, so they have a realistic approach to it. I think they want to be good neighbors, but they want to look out for their best interests as well as the original property owner. So for me, I would like to see, basically, the same consideration you give yourself, probably 150 feet of buffer between those southern abutting residential neighbors.
If I could, just to clarify, I don't think the intention was ever to provide a large screening to the golf course. So just to put it in context, the array in, in the clearing is based on shade lines and shading. The setback from the golf course is, is coincidental. I mean, we were never dictated to say, you know, or, nobody ever told us, you know, give me 150-foot buffer, 200-foot buffer to the golf course. That's not the intention in, I mean, we're, we're providing the screening as a means. I mean, we, we can't, it's not realistic to plant a wall of screening.
No, I understand that, and I, and, but I think that's why I'm saying the natural vegetation would create a more substantial buffer because there's trees of different heights. It's not just a continuous row of four-foot shrubs that really, on a downhill slope, aren't going to do anything. And whether it was intentional or not, it's there. And why not move those panels and give the golf course a 50-foot natural buffer instead of the abutters?
I don't have an answer for you on that.
I would assume it would be that they don't want to see the panels from the golf course.
Well, I, I don't believe-
That's just an assumption.
I honestly don't believe that to be the case. The panels were sited in a way that made sense on the site, took advantage of the topography. It wasn't, it was never intended to provide a greater buffer to the golf course than, obviously, not to the neighbors. I don't think that would ever be anybody's goal. We were relying on the natural vegetation on site that we're leaving, as well as, you know, the distance to the houses on those properties along Northfield Road. We understand that there's some newer houses going in, going up right now. And, you know, that was the, the goal, basically, for the screening there. Extending the screening along that southerly line, you know, to the west towards New Town, New West Townsend Road, you know, we know there's, and we've had this discussion at the last meeting, we know there's a lot of existing vegetation on those lots, which obviously, we don't own that. We can't, you know, if they decide to clear it, they clear it, and then they can see the, the panels a little bit better. But, you know, we're screening to what's there and, and, you know, providing it based on that.
Again, just my opinion, when it comes down to 4.15, 0.4, 0.3, citing by special permit. It lists that conditions the planning board may impose, any conditions deemed necessary to achieve the purpose of this bylaw, such as, but not limited to, the following: greater than minimum setback requirements, modifications to the exterior appearance, limitation of size or extent of facilities, regulation and traffic of site plan features, screening of presence from view by use of appropriate walls, fencing, or buffer strips. So to me, the line of five-foot shrubs is not going to provide a proper buffer, in my opinion. I went out there, I measured 50 feet from the property line, you're going to see everything. So, again, that's just my opinion. And I think that was a concern expressed by not just myself, but other members of the board for the buffering, whether it was adequate.
I believe it was, yeah.
Yes, it was.
So you're proposing nearly 150 feet of clearing of trees, and then about 50 feet from the property line, you're proposing to plant new trees. It just doesn't make any sense.
Well, they're looking to plant nutrients to try to fill in. So they cut all these trees down, right? What you're going to end up with is a toothpick effect. You're going to have little toothpick interruptions of the view through. And the idea of putting evergreen in there is to try to fill that toothpick view in because evergreens will, will fill that in. If you have a heavily populated evergreen wall, essentially, it, it does provide limited view-through. Or it does provide good, what am I, what's the word I'm looking for?
Disruption?
It does screen, it does screen it well, but it takes years for that to fill in. But I agree, additional distance and, you know, layers of buffering definitely adds to it. Did you talk to the residents and, and show them a view of what the buffering would look like and get feedback from them?
I believe there was discussion that, about the screening and, and adding the screening to the plan. I don't know the reaction of, of the neighbors who came to the meeting to that.
Were all the neighbors invited?
16 were immediate abutters, south and west, were by direction of-
Okay.
In addition to-
And three showed up.
Were they notified by registered mail, or did you knock on their door?
Certified mail?
I don't know.
And did any of the westerly neighbors show up to the meeting?
The Stewarts, I believe, were on West Townsend Road at the last meeting.
The Stewarts and the Jacksons.
Okay. Because I noticed that you, you didn't actually change any of the buffering on the westerly side. Was that deemed not, not necessary from this meeting with the neighbors?
There, we believe there to be sufficient screening with the natural vegetation in there and, and, I don't know what the response from the neighbors was.
Sorry to interrupt again, on-site or including their buffering?
On-site.
Because that's what I saw. When you start to, and that's why my concern was the people along Northfield Road, for the most part, that once you start going up the hill, there is- the most part, that once you start going up the hill, there is onsite more buffer than what's down here. But again, the, along the eastern side, along the golf course, you have a tremendous amount of more buffering, so.
I think the last time we were discussing this, one of the things that I brought up was standing at, you know, in the backyard of the Stewarts, and you're looking across, you know, toward this land, it's basically a marsh, and it's pretty flat, and then it's a hill. And so you're, you know, the plan as presented, you know, there, I think there are some serious issues with it. One of the things, and Mr. Chair, if you don't mind if I take a couple of minutes just to ask him a question about this specifically.
Yeah, Michael had actually approached me about, in general, just whether or not he could have time to ask a few questions without comment or interrupting questions from the rest of the board, so.
And I want to follow.
So I'd actually just like to limit to you to about five minutes, so that we don't go on forever, but you can ask as many questions as you want in that five minutes, and we'll let you have it.
I think the residents, I appreciate that there was an effort made to create some graphical representations of what this would look like. However, I wish you would have taken our request a little bit more seriously, and here's why. So these topographical images, they missed the mark, and let me walk you through. So it looks as if someone went on Google Maps and pulled it off and then photoshopped. And, you know, the average person, and I'm looking at some of these pictures, especially from the Stewart's house, you know, the average person is not living a balloon about 200 feet above their house. That's not where they live. And then when you're making a representation of this land, it's, you know, trees around here, around 20, no, actually, I'd say 30 to 50 meters high up. So these pictures are significantly higher than that. And it's not, I don't think anyone's able to see what this is going to look like from their land, which is, I think, what our request was. The other thing is, you know, looking at the land itself, these pictures really paint this out to be a meadow. And if I can draw your attention to some of these photos that you've presented to us, you know, namely this one, the elevation difference, and if we wouldn't mind switching on this board to an overgraph view, so that way everyone else can understand what I'm referring to, but the, from your road, westerly, we're talking a difference in elevation of 80 feet. From your highest point of, you know, of your, of a solar panel to the lowest point is a 150-foot difference in elevation. These pictures make it seem like it's a field that's about a 10-foot difference in elevation, and that's offensive to the people who live here. And I think that they asked, you know, hey, can you give us some photos of what this is going to look like? And I don't think this is reasonable for what their request was. Do you think it's possible that there can be some representations made of this land that actually accounts for the topography of the land?
I'm sure in some shape or form, there probably could be, yes.
Would that be something that would be able to be presented to us at a follow-up meeting?
Yes.
I think the residents are concerned from where they live, what are they going to see? You know, the surety, and you didn't mention that, Section 4.5, 15.4.12 identifies that the project owner shall submit a fully inclusive estimate of the costs associated with removal prepared by a qualified engineer. As I noted in our last meeting, I noted in the packet that it was submitted by David E. Ross Associates, their letterhead was all over this, except for the pages of the decommissioning plan. So was the decommissioning plan prepared by David E. Ross Associates?
No, it wasn't.
Who, if not, who was the qualified engineer who prepared it?
Nexamp, as a company, prepared it. We reviewed it and found it to be in order.
Okay. If the planning board, if we were a planning board in Westminster, then I would find the estimate from the Bogard Construction Company compelling. But we don't live in Westminster, we live in Lunenburg, and the documents that were presented were for a totally different project in Westminster. So I guess, if you, if we can get an estimate for Westminster for 1.95 megawatt solar facility, why can't we get an estimate for Lunenburg for a 6-megawatt facility? Specifically, if you can identify, you know, who is this decommissioning estimate, do we, if we can get a decommissioning estimate from a licensed contractor, from an engineer for this project in this town? Is there somewhere in here where we, that has been presented as required in our bylaw?
As, I guess, as you put it, no, there isn't.
Fire department, what efforts have been made to coordinate with the fire department for the plan of Lunenburg since our last meeting?
Has the fire department been contacted?
Okay. So the fire department, so since our last meeting, we raised a fire concern in this meeting, the fire department did submit a response to that, and the response essentially says, if, in my interpretation of it, essentially says, if this catches on fire, it's going to burn, and we're going to try to minimize it spreading to other neighbors. That's essentially what it says. So is it fair to believe that 36 acres of a 6-megawatt solar facility has a higher fire risk than 36 acres of trees and woods? Is it reasonable to believe that there's a higher fire risk with this than if it was just woods?
I don't have any data to support either way. I'm not privy to the fire chief's response or request for comment.
I'll make, I'll make a leap and suggest that if you're producing 6 megawatts of power, then it is a higher fire risk than just trees and woods and grass. And the current plan, you know, the standards for granted permanence outline in 4.15.4.3 states that the proposed installation cannot adversely impact public safety. I do not believe that if this thing gets, catches fire, that the plan to let it burn and let's hope it doesn't spread to other homes, I think that that does adversely impact public safety.
Sorry to interrupt, but a few more questions and then...
I'll come back later to the rest of them, but I do, I believe it does adversely impact public safety.
This letter, public...
And I'll refrain, and I have additional questions, several more, but I'll come back to them later in this public hearing.
They did or not?
That's my letter.
Oh, all right. Did you...
I did not. There were questions from the board.
Okay. I believe you will have access to that, whether through public records, the fire chief's comments and Adam's comments, if you want to request it.
Essentially, the question was asked at the last hearing whether the town owned a foam pumping truck to assist in extinguishing an array like this. In speaking with the fire chief, we currently have two arrays, and he said that there isn't enough foam in the world to, or there isn't operationally a truck that would produce enough foam to cover the array nor keep it covered in order to extinguish a fire. And their protocols are to treat this as similar to a brush fire, where they would be looking to contain and limit damage and wait for the owner's response team to show up to decommission the site and then fight whatever fire was remaining, because obviously, these are going to be live as long as the sun is shining.
Does your current plan, if there is a fire, how does the fire department get notified based on the plans that you currently have? How does the fire department get notified of a fire?
Is there any kind of, how does the fire department get notified in the event of a fire?
There's no mechanism.
So the mechanism is that 36 acres of, in my opinion, fire hazard, you're depending upon homeowners who surround you to call this in?
I guess I take exception to you calling it a fire hazard. It's no different than any other array that's ever been built, and as I'm aware, I don't believe they've ever been classified as fire hazards.
Then I, well, I will adjust it. I agree with you on that. It's, however, I believe that it's a higher fire risk than just trees and woods. I think it's slightly, you know, it's a little bit more than woods catching on fire.
And that might be...
You're generating a lot of power, there's a lot of electricity, there's a lot of potential for there to be a fire.
Sorry to interrupt, but I think the, are you aware of any facilities like this that have been caught on fire?
I'm not. It doesn't, doesn't mean that they haven't.
I've done some research recently, is last year, one in Littleton on their rooftop solar caught fire. So, and that, it's, it happens. So I, again, it's, I don't think it's an irrational fear.
Right. I don't think it's a rational fear.
How many acres of forest burn every year?
Well, right, but it's still, it has the ability to catch on fire. So, I mean, we have to make sure that we protect our residents. And I did talk to Adam to this, and I think that I would like to see from your, I don't know how you refer to them, your fire suppression team or whoever it may be, a plan as to how they would address it if it caught on fire, and how to coordinate with our local fire department as to ensure the public safety.
I'm sorry, but it's not about catching on fire, it's about causing a fire. This has got 6 megawatts of energy going through it, that's got a great potential to cause a fire.
Thank you.
Whereas a lightning strike could cause the woods to catch on fire. There's a little bit of a difference there, but, I mean, as woods, it could be a thrown match or a cigarette butt, but the woods is not going to spontaneously combust.
I understand that, but the panels being there could have the potential for that to combust, and I think our, our intent is the same, to protect public safety, so I...
Yes.
If we had a dry, you know, summer like we did last summer, and, you know, there was some kind of hazard, you know, this is an area where it could reasonably spread. And that, I guess, is my concern. And then what is the mechanism in place that's not just relying on the neighbors to call this in?
Right, so there is no mechanism directly. We do notice when the array reduces in function, which may happen if, in fact, that was the case, and we would then alert the first responders with that information.
And the first responders being Lunenburg Fire Department?
Yes, and ourselves.
But you're located out of Havre, we've already, I think, established that it takes you guys an hour to get here.
We are not the first responders. I didn't mean to infer that.
Okay.
I think it's, it's a relatively unfair justification to call it a fire hazard, because everything here is built to code, to electric codes, much like houses, much like buildings and so forth, and there is no additional hazards because of the electricity going through wires. These are all correctly insulated, they're mounted properly, they are maintained, they're watched, the transmission lines and electric lines have been running around all our communities on a regular basis. Those typically do not cause fires. It's been my experience, that's not the cause. What's more likely is a grass fire from kids playing, running around throwing some matches. Lightning is a higher probability to cause a fire in a forest than a properly-built solar system, much like a home, much like a building. Those are just general facts, but nobody here can say one way or the other, that's 100% in any direction. I mean, it's not, it's not foolproof.
I don't think anybody's saying that.
Again, I'm not saying, I say, there's no guarantee that it's not going to catch on fire. If in the event that it does catch on fire, I want to be sure that there is a proper way to contain it to the site the best of the ability, and that's got nothing to do with our fire department, because they will not go on site, they will not spray the panels. So what I would like is assurance from you that your team has the ability to, if a fire does occur, to pacify it and ensure the protection of our residents and surrounding area.
We do, and essentially, it's turning, turning the system off in as many places as we can.
Right, what I'm saying is, is can you submit a plan, do they have a plan? So, you know, when we get the call, we A, do this, we B, when we get there, we B, do this.
That has been submitted.
I mean, that would relieve some of our concerns, if, if they have the ability to do that. But from the comments we have from our fire chief, who was the town's advisor on fire suppression and fire safety, he says that regardless of the amount of foam they had, they would not have the capacity to do anything about.
Right, it's essentially, that's correct, it's essentially shut down. It, it's two teams working together, the fire department would work on the grass fire and the containment aspect of things, and we would be working on the solar.
Their main goal is to protect personal safety and personal property first, and then probably forest area and having it spread next, so.
Absolutely.
And a notification system, I think it's, I understand, I apologize first for calling this a fire hazard, because that's a very technical term, and I do not believe that this is any more of a fire hazard than, as you stated, a home that's built to code. And I think that these can be built in such a way that they do not present a significant risk, you know, more than any other structure, any other building. So I want to clarify that. I guess what I'm trying to infer is that in your home that is properly built to code, you are required to have fire alarms. And in your, any other building that's built to code, you're required to have some kind of mechanism, whereas when, in the event that there is a fire, there's a way to notify other people. And my concern is that this is an area that's, that currently, right now, does not have electricity flowing through it or generating it, and that when you now introduce this into the area, that there is the potential that this could catch fire. And I think that that potential is a little bit higher than just woods being in the woods, just, you know, being out there. So if people are at work on a Wednesday, as most people who abut this, my understanding, do work, and if people are at work on a Wednesday at, you know, 10 o'clock in the morning and this catches on fire, how do they not show up at home at 5 o'clock and see their house burnt down? I guess that's what I'm trying to say. Now, if the fire alarm's going off in the house next door to you, you can hear that, you can call the, you can call someone. So what is the mechanism, I guess is what I'm looking, it doesn't sound as if you have one, but I guess I'm looking that you can introduce a mechanism so that if something were to catch fire on these 36 acres of land, that there is a way for someone who abuts this to know this before their house is at risk of burning down.
The immediacy you're asking for, that fire alarm, if the smoke goes, typically, when it's human habitation, people are working. So that's not the case here, and nor do we provide that type of instant response. The best response we can provide is that we notice that something doesn't function as it should, and we see that immediately. We have people watching those, those data collections during the day. I mean, at night, it's not generating power, but during the day, we do. And so they would see that, again, not immediately, but reasonably soon. So the scenario of a 10-hour delay in somebody's house being burnt down is very, very unlikely.
But do you have worked out with the fire department yet what your plan is going to be with them to coordinate all of this? So that, I mean, you're saying a lot of stuff, which you're expecting them to do, but, I mean, what have you done to actually put this in a memorandum of understanding? And where are you at with that? Because it seems as if expectations are flowing in one direction.
So there are two things we've done. We have already submitted an emergency response plan, again, for their consideration as part of this application. And secondly, we offer first responder training on every project, between our responding team and all entities with the town, for as long as they need to. And so that's, that's standard procedure for Nexamp.
And do you have that training identified with the fire department of, hey, on this date, we're going to complete this training? I guess what I'm saying is, I understand what you're saying, what I'm looking for is this. What I'm looking for is that, you know, you have something concrete with the fire department that says, hey, this is our, our plan, as I know you've presented, this is our plan, and the fire department's response, you know, to this, and then what you guys are going to do to, you know, to kind of rehearse this, to make sure that the people around us are protected. I think it's upon you, you know, to provide this for the town, to give them your best ideas. Maybe I'm missing that.
You, I believe you have. We have offered that in writing in the application, it's there.
I also believe that there is a required document 41548R that says you need to provide a provision of water, including that needed for fire protection. And you asked to waive that, and is there infrastructure in the street, hydrants, is there a pond that they can pump from? I mean, a lot of your properties continue to be wooded, I would hope you expect our fire department to be able to put that fire out, but I don't think you've, and again, you haven't granted any waivers yet, so I would like to see that provision of water, and it could be just a diagram of the hydrants on the street, that would be sufficient or somewhere for them to draw water from, because if they show up and there's nowhere to draw water from, then they lack the ability to protect our residents. So, again, I think this is documentation that can be produced with some effort, but...
Fair enough, I think we can identify the nearest hydrants, I mean, it's protected as it is today, with the addition of a pump, a truck, and access, things of that nature.
But again, if we had, the letter we got from the fire chief was not reassuring that the onsite would be able to be handled, because they didn't have any communication with your fire suppression people, and all their concern is containing it to the site and protecting the surrounding area and personal property and the residents.
We'll make sure that that happens. Thank you.
So if I could go over to the buffer strip issue again, just to reiterate, I don't want to kill, you know, beat a dead horse.
Actually, I wanted to go back to that, but since it was a specific discussion amongst the abutters and the applicant, I'd like to hear what they have to say prior to us, because if they're okay with what's proposed, then...
Well, they didn't talk to all of them.
No, no, I know, but...
And they're not all... I just wanted to go over this just from, just to share my viewpoint on this. Okay. So if you go into our, into our bylaw and you take a strict approach to this, 41547 says that you have to have 200 feet of buffering, okay? Visual buffering, that's what buffer strips are called, visual buffering, a barrier. Visual buffering is, is... Visual buffering is called out in the bylaw five or six times.
I think the most...
I think that the responsibility for providing that buffering is on the applicant, because it's their property that we're worried about. We're worried about seeing it from the outer edge of some abutting property line.
I can cite the section, if you want me to.
Sure.
4.15.4.9E or F, Visual Impacts, it says, "Any large-scale ground-mounted solar photic installation shall be designed to minimize visual impacts, including preserving natural vegetation to the maximum extent possible, blending in equipment with surroundings and adding vegetative buffers to screen abutting residential properties whether developed or not."
So what, oops, sorry.
Citing shall be such that the view of the solar electric generation installation from the areas of town shall be as minimal as possible, buffer strips shall surround the proposed project, a screening plan that assures the facility is shielded to the greatest extent possible from public view shall be required to be reviewed under the development, well, site plan approval at this point, but...
So we asked for pictures, illustrations?
We have the ability to request...
We did, we did, but they came back with aerials rather than, what we asked for was looking from the property, through the trees.
Submit those sections and all.
I did, yes.
You did.
They have, and they're very generous with the, with the, in six months of the year, there's going to be no leaves on the trees.
So, we talked about that as well. My point being that it seems as though every time one of these comes up, the onus gets put on the property owners to buffer their view, and you guys minimize your buffers so that you can maximize your sun exposure and put more panels in, which makes sense, right, from a purely financial perspective, but that's not what, necessarily what we're here for. We have to make sure that the bylaws upheld for everybody. So that's what I look at, and I don't see that happening. We've asked for it, we've asked for it to be pushed back, and still, granted, you put that line of, a solid line of trees in, but that's a wall of trees, it's not natural vegetative buffering that, you know, exists to, let me go back to the citing by special permit. I have to find that it's in keeping with the natural and rural character of the neighborhood, if that's what this neighborhood represents, and in my opinion, it does, it's one of the most natural areas that we have in town. So, and scenic, yes. So I have to find that this is in keeping with that, and I have to find that you're not diminishing the air by cutting down all these trees. And you think that should be a no-brainer, is that right?
Can we, wait a minute, can we step back diminishing the air, I'm not sure I follow...
Well, these are a, an oxygen creator and a carbon sink, right?
The existing forest.
The existing forest.
Okay, I'm not going to argue the science.
Okay, so you're eliminating the carbon sink and the oxygen creation, and you're replacing it with?
Grass. Well, we're replacing it with a meadow.
With a meadow, which is not what is there, so it's, you're also changing the environment.
It is different, so it does enhance a different environmental habitat.
It's an enclosed environmental habitat.
So it's different, it's not the same, it's different, but it's also environmentally sound, okay? It is. There's a case to be made for removing trees relative to carbon sinks and carbon removal and so forth, on what renewable energy replaces when your utility company needs to burn fossil fuels to create that same amount of electricity. This is reducing that substantially.
I understand that, but it's not replacing oxygen.
I don't think the bylaw states we're cutting off oxygen to the neighbors, it's...
Air, it says air, what is air?
Well, we're not taking air away, it's still present. I don't want to argue it, I don't think the bylaw is that specific.
If it's affecting the quality of air, I have to find that it's not.
It's passive.
Again, I have to question the logic behind clearcutting 36 acres to be environmentally friendly.
Yeah, I mean, there's more and more...
I can't wrap my mind around that logic.
The state's even warning about it, so...
I understand where it's coming from.
The state is strongly discouraging this, in fact. They're not just warning, they're strongly discouraging, clearcutting woods to put in solar.
I would suggest a little different approach of the same point. I think they're strongly encouraging to utilize disturbed areas first.
Correct.
Open farms, open fields, and I understand that, and we have, and people do that, but there are economics that come into that play, where industrial landowners do not want their land developed with us. It's not worth their while, they want to develop it in a different manner. So it's to encourage renewable energy, cutting trees is in fact part of that process, you know, much like any other development.
Sorry, I have some questions along those lines. So how many projects, and I know you've done basically over 100 in New England, how many of those have been of this sort, of just completely clearcutting, not using any existing open fields, on average, I mean, a rough number?
Maybe 10% of this size, first and foremost, most are smaller, half this size, two.
So you're saying 3.4 acres?
No.
Is that 10%?
We could go by megawatts, how many of them are under 6 megawatts?
Well, they're all under 6, but how many are 6 megawatts? Maybe 8 or 10?
8 or 10, okay. And the smaller ones are profitable?
Which is 8 or 10%, which is what he said 10%.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is a smaller size system, 4 megawatts, is still profitable, obviously, or you probably would not have built it.
So that depends, every financial analysis depends on primarily the interconnection cost and where it's located, and that is a variable that we need to overcome to bring power forward. Essentially, this is a very, very expensive interconnection, as you might suspect, and that's why we're trying to build this sized project. And just one other point that may not have emphasized in the screening, so in addition to the 50 feet that we are leaving, is a vegetative buffer and planting an evergreen barrier at that edge, again, to infill the human scale, it's a four to six foot proposal. Again, those should take the eyesight of the human at ground, at ground, people's yards, and screen that to some degree. But beyond that, we're leaving...
I have to disagree, I stood in the backyards and looked down the hill, and I mean, I've been in construction for years, I can eyeball 50 feet, and there's no way that a six-foot shrub, unless you're going to plant those 20, 20 feet tall, they're going to have no immediate visual impact.
It's not really the height, it's the...
If they're not in front of the panels, it's, is the height, I mean, you're looking, you're going to see ground in between, over the trees, you're going to see ground in between the panels, that has no...
It's 150-foot hill.
I think it's a continuous slope, is that not true?
It is.
Okay, so when you look up a continuous slope, you're looking at your own height, your height is 5, 6 feet, so the plantings in the six to eight foot, you know, the four to six foot will grow to be eight feet.
Yeah, but these...
Is in fact what screens your eyesight.
But not every property is level and screened, some of these properties are multi-tiered, with cleared areas, they have second stories, it's not just from, I mean, and again, I'm not saying, and I spoke to the abutters, they're not expecting not to see that, they know it, they know that leaves are gone. So, again, in my opinion, leaving the natural buffer is probably the best way to screen. I have some concerns about the amount, but I also have some suggestions as to how we can possibly mitigate that, because it does say that, sorry, there is a section that says, unless you can prove to us that the buffer is adequate, then, and again, for me, this does not prove that the, where is it, okay, so it's 41547, under setbacks and buffer strips, it says, "Buffer strips in all districts. All ground-mounted installations shall be surrounded by a buffer strip which shall be, shall be 200 feet in depth in residential conservation or recreation district, shall be 50 feet in a commercial or industrial district, unless it abuts a residential conservation or recreation district in which the buffer strip shall be 200 feet in depth along such abutting property lines unless the applicant can demonstrate and the planning board finds that the adequate buffering can be provided in a narrow buffer strip." So now, that being said, for me, I think the 50-foot, even with the plants, is not going to be even close. What I would like to see, again, is, and maybe we could do this in a phased approach, that there's, until it's cleared, it's going to be very hard to determine whether you can provide me, demonstrate that the buffer is adequate. So what my suggestion would be is leave the 200 but, buffer of clearing behind those residences along that line, and once that's cleared, the proof will be in the pudding, whether you can see it or not, because the whole lot will be cleared, and then you come back for a modification, and if you can prove to me that that buffer is adequate, we have the opportunity to make the modification or not, if it's not proven, so.
With all due respect...
I think that's a reasonable request, and again, I think the resident should be given the same consideration that the property owner is giving himself.
So with all due respect, I think I just wanted to add, so in addition to the 50 feet of uncut forestry that's being left, the additional evergreen planting that we are proposing, and again, I don't have the right distance, if it's 50, 60, 80 feet, I know it varies, but we're leaving all the stumps in place outside of our fence line. So although we are clearing, because it's tall trees that shade our array, when we stump those, they do regrow, they do regrow over time, much like the evergreens grow. So it's our position that over time, you will have a, from ground up, very dense vegetative buffer, both from our evergreen plantings and from existing stumps that will regrow, and the original 50 trees that are closest, I mean, they essentially don't provide a lot of real screening, so to speak, it's the human scale, it's the six-foot, eight-foot elevation that does it. The land's not up here, and then you go down and back up, it's a continuous slope, that's what's presented here. And so those are the type of plantings and screenings that actually do screen. So that's our presentation, is that by leaving stumps in place and letting them to regrow along with the evergreens that we're providing, along with the 50-foot natural buffer, that that's a very reasonable screening of this project to a residential abutter.
I don't think that's...
You can disrespect, absolutely.
And I think there are ways to substantiate that, but once those trees are gone, that's it, there's no bringing them back, there's no bringing back the natural buffer, and again, unless you want to plant 20 to 30-foot trees in their place, for me, I think there's a way to substantiate it and to possibly change my mind on that, and I've offered that up as a compromise, but for me, that's kind of a sticking point, I'd like to make sure that just along that southern border and where there's not an existing 200-foot buffer, to leave that buffer there, that 200-foot buffer.
So again, any tall trees that get left, we are essentially need to be 200 feet plus away with our modules, so that's a criteria of design.
How is that? You've just stated that you're higher in elevation from the area of cutting, so if you're higher in elevation, how, and the most impact is going to be during the winter, the summer months where you gain the most electricity is going to be pretty much straight down, and I don't think that your 200-foot setback is going to be required. Also, this has been making me think about opposite of a photometric plan, like a shade plan. Is there any way that you could provide a graphical, reasonable representation besides these mockups of Google Earth with houses stuck on them?
Pictures.
You can't take pictures of a future development.
No, but you can take pictures of existing and mark off where the 50 feet is, and if you can see, I mean...
I think what Matthew's asking for is, is they use a shade and shadow analysis to determine where the sun comes in, which trees they would have to remove, so I believe that you've already developed that, since you've designed an array, so I think he's requesting a copy of that.
Correct, we have a copy of that, and essentially, the modules are at the edge of that shade line, which is essentially 200, maybe 220 feet off that property line.
So you've added, it looks like a couple hundred additional panels for the loss of, looks like 20, if that, near the area that the conservation asked you to revise, and you've left the buffer strip exactly as it was, except for a few plantings, as we had asked you to revise. I just, I can't help but think that this is not at all in concert with what we had discussed at the last meeting. I mean, you've not done anything to address, you have done, you've added trees, but other than that, I don't feel that you've done anything to address the multitude of comments that we had at the previous meeting. I mean, I think that if you would have given another 50 feet of unstumped trees, that you might have gotten, thank you very much, and here's your permit, but to come back to us with pretty much the same plan is almost insulting, I think.
Since we've been discussing the buffers and the visual impacts to the abutters, does anybody feel it's a good time, or any objections to hearing from them at this point regarding that?
No, I don't have any objections.
Somebody, do you have any, you don't have any more comments? I mean, you can comment after.
I have one question, I do have one question about...
I had to say, and you have more.
I have one question about the environment before we get to residents, just in line with this train of thought. One of the things I may have raised last time, but I want to bring it up again, is when you cut down trees that are in a mostly impervious land, we know that this is a lot of shale up here, that these trees have root systems that are embedded with this ground, they're absorbing a ton of water, tons of water, and so my concern is, you're cutting down a bunch of trees. Now, I'm a military background, tactical military background, we do not cross land that was cleared in the last couple of years, because it's too brittle, it's too high risk for our equipment, right? So we don't cross, and I'll tell you, this is my own military background steps in and says, you know, when you cut down a bunch of trees, and it's in an area that is on the side of the hill, which you can assume is rocky, and most of the times you can, and in this case, we know from the soil samples that it is, and so when you have these roots embedded in there, then you cut down the system of life, this is kind of holding everything together, these trees, and you get rid of these trees, there is going to be an impact with erosion, with soil, with a whole bunch of other stuff, and our bylaws require, I'll be specific, in 3.4.3.9 and 3.4.3.10, for you guys to prevent an environmental impact study. I think that the one that you presented is offensive, and then I did not find an erosion and sedimentation plan, I really am looking for some kind of, you know, educated document that says, this is, this is what we're going to do, and this is the impact.
Okay, if I might, to address the runoff portion of that.
Not the runoff portion, I don't, I'm not so concerned, I think your numbers are in order. I think what we're not accounting for is the transition from woods to this fake meadow.
Sheet 1.01 contains a stormwater pollution prevention and erosion sedimentation.
What are you looking at, so I can look at the same thing?
It's the latest set of plans, and this was in the first set of plans. In fact, there was an entire sheet devoted to it. The notes have been moved around, but there's a full detailed, step-by-step erosion control measures, get into general construction requirements, we have a pre-construction phase, which lines out how to handle upcoming work, we talk about how the drainage system is handled, dust control, underground utilities, landscaping, grass and slope cover specifications, we have details for our erosion control barriers, I mean, it's certainly addressed, and I know it's been, and Jeff can speak to this, it's been reviewed by him, he hasn't made me aware of any potential issues, you know, outside of the information we've provided here, a stormwater pollution prevention plan will be filed with EPA for the project, that's a requirement for the area of disturbance, so...
If I could just interrupt, so we get to residents, so what you're submitting is that what you have in the notes here is your erosion, that we should assume that this is your erosion and sedimentation control plan, that this suffices the requirements of our bylaws, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, and then what you're also saying is that, and my first column was the environmental impact, you know, and that study that was done in here, which has no reference, by the way, to the environment, really, that that also is, do you have any intentions on revising that, maybe to account for the wildlife that currently lives there, maybe to account for the birds that currently live there, they're part of wildlife, maybe, I don't know, to account for the environment? Because right now, the environmental impact statement, it does not account for the environment. It basically says, it doesn't have any impact, that's essentially what it says, it has minimal impact on the environment. And what does that mean? I don't think that most people can agree with that, but it would be nice if it would say, you know, these are the impacts, and this is how we're mitigating it. We understand that animals, deer, bears live in these woods, and we're putting up, we're fencing in 36 acres, but this is why it's okay. I may not agree with you, but at least we can get something there that addresses this stuff. And I will review this, I didn't, I didn't consider this note to be part of this sediment control plan, but I will review it. And I apologize for taking so much time before the residents get to cover this.
Just a note on the financial charity thing, I just wanted to... Just a note on the financial charity thing, I just wanted to, actually, a question for, I guess for Adam. So it states that they have to post something for remediation of the property, should we have to, for whatever reason, step in, I can't imagine why we would, but anyway, if we have to, and bring it back to remediation, in my mind, doesn't say, you know, continue to use it as a, as a fake field, but return it to what it was, which is a forested land. No?
Generally, excuse me, generally closure plans are for the removal of manmade materials.
And that's it?
Yeah. And, you know, with something like...
Reseeding, it says, is what they've presented.
I'm sorry?
They've presented reseeding.
Well, because there would be some disturbance with, but with something like a meadow that's created in situations like this, left to its own devices, it's going to reforest fairly quickly.
Yeah.
So there's no cost in that. And that's actually a healthy process for an area to go through, which is really kind of the purpose of wildfire, and has been for thousands of years. You know, areas get burnt out when they get overgrown, and that process of regrowing creates a new environment that introduces new flora and fauna over a period of time and recreates that healthy environment. So I think really what we're looking for is what the cost of removing the racks, the pins, the panels themselves, any conduit, any wire, et cetera, that would be removed that was necessary to be removed.
Do you think it's reasonable that, because calculating these costs, it comes to like $175,000. Do you think it's reasonable that we should consider the resale value of these as we figure out the cost of removal? Because they're accounting for it. Do you think it's reasonable that we should, that we should say?
Yeah. I don't think there's any reason that you wouldn't scrap, scrappable material. It reduces cost outlay. If, if the town were to close a facility and, you know, a building is a little bit different, but close a facility where there were items that were recyclable or resalable, one would think they would make an effort to do so prior to just throwing those things into a refuse facility that's going to incur them cost. And I would expect that this would be no different.
I guess what I'm saying is selling, because I think that their plan accounts for these not just to be the materials that are recycled, but for them to be resold, that for the town to incur the time, energy, effort, cost. We can't store these kind of panels. We have nowhere to put all this stuff.
No, I mean, I would expect that any panels would be...
Left.
Either, well, if there's a value to them, there, one would expect there would be some massive issue that they couldn't come and collect them themselves and remove them. And if it's that massive, perhaps there is a value to the town to selling them. But, you know, the removal, if there's value to them, there's no reason not to sell them.
If we found ourselves in a position where we had to sell this, do we have a process in place unrelated to their plan? Would we have a process in place to actually do this, to sell and get, make back 100?
And I would, I would have to look, I would have to look into it. It, you know, we do have, we do have processes in place for the sale of municipal property. And that's outlined through Mass General Law, Chapter 30B, how you, you know, how you declare and sell resources, where this is private property. It would probably have to have gone through a foreclosure process for us to then need to, or for us to be owners of it, and then we could declare it surplus goods, as I would understand it, and it would be then sold through, through that process.
It would also take town resources, labor, to handle that. And actually, we did go through this process with the old high school, because they did actually did do a sealed bid process, where people, like the old wood shop, they made a list, they sealed bids, but a lot of the stuff they just sent to Haiti, for the most part, donated it to Haiti. So, I mean...
And I would like to comment on something that Adam had mentioned, it's left to its own devices that it will re, will reestablish itself.
It'll regenerate.
But its own devices are not 50% shade. I would mention that, that the panels shade the ground underneath.
No, no. I'm speaking after the removal of all the manmade material.
Well, I think the specific part we were talking about is the clearcutting and stumping of all this area that's going to be covered with panels.
My understanding was the question was in reference to the reclamation bond and whether or not reforesting should be included as part of that.
Okay. But as far as erosion goes, it's not going to re...
That was a previous question.
Yeah, it was about the bylaw, the wording of the bylaw. Very good. Sorry.
Are we ready to hear from the residents now? Sorry, I'm just thinking. These are in chapter 10. What's that? No, no. My question was, is any of the land across the street attached to this property? It's an address.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Valliere, and I'm currently building a home at 1048 Northfield Road.
Okay.
First off, I want to apologize if I seem like I'm behind the curve on this, because I was never notified that this was going on. That's why you haven't seen me before. And again, I only have about 500 feet of abutting property to this project. Wife and I looked at this piece of land, we actually closed on it October 4th of last year. Been working on a house ever since, planning on moving in two weeks into November. Before this, we did our research on a lot of other properties. Leominster, Pittsburgh, Westminster. We came through here, looked at this, was set back about 630 feet off the road. We are currently building a 3,200 square foot house. Not looking for resale. This is our investment. We walked this property a number of times. Love the idea of being out here. Did our due diligence, went to the town, checked out what was behind us, what's around me, what's the possibilities. 99 acres of recreation. This gentleman here referenced, what, late 80s, early 90s, talk about developing and all that. Been in construction for quite a long time. I started looking at it as, okay, so a development like that, you're a half hour, 40 minutes from a highway? To put a development that big in here? First off, you are footing the bill, basically, and I could be wrong, you could be, you know, I think you're footing the bill for your infrastructure upfront, plus the start, plus you have to market these homes. Again, you're not seeing your profit till the end. I'll take my chances with that. What's next? Maybe 18 holes? What comes out behind us? Another nine holes, a golf course? You know, there's worse things. Never saw this coming. So now, instead of coming up my driveway and looking to the left, so that would put you looking out towards the west, now, instead of all this recreation, I'm looking at 50 feet of trees, and then wide open, and then, of course, the panels. I was up there earlier, I was standing in the driveway, looking down towards my neighbor. I guesstimated 150 feet through thick woods. I could see him standing on his deck. What am I going to see through 50 feet? A lot more than that. Another thing that's troublesome is, when I bought this lot, I looked at that piece right alongside me and noticed that the golf course had that swath coming down the west side of my driveway. I did some inquiring. I had one of Mr. Augustus, people that work for him, ask him if he'd be interested taking it out of recreation and selling it to me. The response I got was, well, he would have to foot the cost of being me, foot the cost of taking it out of recreation. And then we talked about a number. Got going with the home, things, one thing led to another. I finally caught up with Mr. Augustus just by a freak accident, July 30th. He had a golf tournament up at his place, was talking to some people, and they introduced me to him. I told him what I was proposing. Absolutely, let me look into it. I definitely would be interested. That's July 30th. I'm guessing test borings were done out in the back and land clearing way before that. Thinking I could probably hear from somebody what's going on. Did not hear that. Now, I'm hearing that this is, they're only using 20, what is it, 25% of the available land back there, so that's another 75% that's, and I'm just, again, I'm behind the curve on this. Why can't it be located somewhere else, in the back of that lot somewhere? Why does it have to be surrounding us? Number two, 6 megawatts, is that one of the biggest, if not the biggest, why so big? Again, you know, it comes back to, I did a lot of research, I bought this home, I have a lot of money invested in this house, and now, I'm going to turn around and this is what I'm going to look at. This is, it's not what I bought. And again, I get it, it's not my land. I understand that, there's chances of this, doesn't mean I have to agree with it. So I, again, I've sat and I've listened to everything that's going on, and I just hope you guys will really, you know, take our, take our opinions in. And again, I want to thank you for coming out, took a look at the lot, and I think you really understand what I'm talking about. How thick the trees are right now, and then to put it down to 50 feet, even coming out the back of my lot, Mr. Smith owns 100 feet behind me, and then this would all start, I'm going to see that. You could see it now, just from the clearing they did to do their test borings. You look through and you can, you can see it starting to clear out a little bit. Can you just imagine what this is going to look like, 36 acres? You're going to go to the second floor, my garage. Right now, I look out, there's trees there, I'm going to be looking at this whole solar farm in the back. I just, I don't know why. You know, why does it have to be here? There's no clear, clear land that this could be done on. So you're going to clear cut 36 acres? That's my opinion.
Thank you.
I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wayne Jackson, 202 New Westhausen, on the west side. Have you guys done any kind, or had them do any kind of study as to what, how this will impact property values for abutters?
They state that there will be no impact on property values. That was asked at the last meeting, and they said that there would be no impact. I don't personally believe that.
Thank you, neither do I. If I had the choice, because I'm on the west side, and there is some pretty good distance. It's up a hill, it's pretty thin, it's about the same depth as the property I own, just across the creek there, and I can see all the way up the hill. I'm worried about, one, my property value. I bought 17 years ago, because I like living in the woods. I want to live in the woods, and I don't want those woods to go away. I'm worried about what it's going to do to my property value. I really am. I'm worried about the water table, because down at that creek is the water table. And right now, in the winter, it, you know, it comes up on the back of my property line. Is now more of my land? I mean, I know they're dealing with the runoff side of it, but it's going to go in the ground somewhere and hit the water table. Like you said, those trees drink a lot of water. And is it going to take a third of my property even more in wetlands now, because the water table changes? And, you know, I do appreciate you going out and looking from a resident's point of view, but, you know, it's one of the biggest in the states. I didn't know that till I got here now. So that's my concern, is I can look up the hill and I can see where that will be. And I know that's where the drainage pit is, right off of where I'll be looking up at. But chain link fence, I can see clear up to there now.
What do you see now?
I see the landscape, because all the trees are very tall and all the canopy is very tall, so I can see it all the way up the whole hill.
Mm-hmm.
And I'll see the chain link fence there.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I won't see all the panels, because I think that's where it crests off.
Mm-hmm.
But I'll see that chain link fence. I do think it'll affect my property value with, I mean, if I had a choice of buying a house not next to, not abutting a solar farm, and want to abutting a solar farm, I would pick the not abutting.
Yeah, actually, in response to your question about the house values, we did ask that. There was, they did, in their defense, they did say there's limited data to support either way. So, and then they compared a lot to wind and shows none, but that's kind of apples to oranges. And I also did research it through the same site, NREL, and they said that some of these larger, larger, over 5 megawatt, I think, are trending that within, the closer you get within a, like, one mile radius or a three mile radius, it goes down. But they said that, that within a one mile radius of some of these larger, it's trending towards reducing values. And again, I hear you, there's value, but then there's also saleability. So if you're going to look at a house that's surrounded by solar panels and look at the same house by, with the woods, I mean...
Yeah.
They may tell you that some people want to see the solar panels, but again, just from my point of view, I would prefer, and again, it's, it's allowed, but we have to make sure that it's appropriate. So that's what we're...
So on the fire side also, how toxic are these if they are burning? Right? I don't know what the chemical makeup is, what is it going to put into the air? So I kind of worry about that, too, and I agree. It's a higher risk of 6 megawatts of power catching fire than a tree in the woods. Lightning does happen, but, I don't know, I just would prefer it not in my backyard. I bought in the woods for a reason. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time.
I'm Donna Stewart. I live at 252 New Westhausen Road, have lived there for 50 years. And I'm kind of appalled that you want...
Do you mind speaking up so everybody can hear? Sorry.
That's not in. I was having trouble hearing down there. I'm actually appalled that you're going to put something like that, or thinking of putting something like that in my backyard. I can look out the, any window in the back of my house, and I can see 300 yards up the hill. Now, that hill, I got, you're showing, hey, you're showing me this house number eight, but I'm house number six, but that's all right. That hill is approximately a 35 degree angle all the way up to the golf course. In the wintertime, I would estimate, I can see 500 yards. I see animals walking in those trees in the wintertime, walking between them. And there's a lot of trees up in there. Like I say, I've lived there 50 years. There's a lot of trees that are 70 footers. Now, another thing, you heard from my wife at the last meeting, and so I don't need to repeat any of that, but I'm looking at this drawing, I know it's not covering what you got now, but this drawing I'm looking at is, this is New Westhausen Road. You've got two panels or something here that's going to capture this energy. And it seems funny that we're going to fight this fire if it happens. And you have no roads coming down in here or here, but I will be willing to say, I'll be the one to call the fire department, because I can see that whole backyard. I can see it better than anyone else on New Westhausen Road.
So you're saying you have, if I may interrupt you, you have a 35 degree angle of view?
It's about a 35 degree angle.
Yeah.
I still in this backyard, it's ridiculous.
It's my backyard. Right now, the brook is low. You know?
Yeah.
The water coming by changes, and I know if you clear the trees off, it's going to be a killer for me. Because the east is where all the storms come from. Rain, snow, wind, and if you're looking at taking out 36 acres of 70 foot high trees, I better put up some steel bars in my windows to save the glass, because I'm telling you, Anyhow, you've heard enough. I would say that, you know, maybe if we took this bottom section that's also around two brooks, and there's more than two coming down in the wintertime, took that section and put it on the end up here, everybody'd be happy. Put it up towards Howard Street. Put it up towards Howard Street. Either that, or you're gonna have to look at putting a road down here, or buying a helicopter to fight a fire with. Because you're not going down through my backyard, because you're gonna lose your truck in the swamp. And you've got nothing else coming in that bottom section. It's, it's all considered up here, the top of your map. You consider all your firefighting would come in here, go up around by the golf course, and come out here on Northfield Road. You've got nothing in that lower section. So, but like I said, I'll call the fire department, once you do it, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stewart.
Before we take the next person, if there is one, I actually did, before I forget, I received an email from a resident who actually has a physical limitation, so they could not be here. But he did ask me to read a statement into the record. And this would be from Mr. Jerry Wilkins, from 251 Burridge Street. And his statement is, sorry, as follows. "I will state that I believe that these large power plants do not belong in residential areas, whether it is this project, future projects, or the abomination of Pleasant and West Street Project. I have trust that the planning board members will carefully weigh the impacts of their vote on the sanctity of the residential zone. With all respects, Jerry Wilkins." And I can give you that for the minutes if you need it. Is there any more public comment from the public?
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Lucy Hawkins-Smith, and I live at ten twenty-six Northfield Road. And I came tonight because I was hoping to get some answers, to really find out what's going on. And I have to say, I'm quite disappointed, because what I heard tonight seemed to me to be a lot of cop outs. There really were no real concrete answers presented to the residents of the neighborhood. I've worked for seven plus years in the chemical industry as a chemical sales rep. And I have sold to manufacturers who make components for solar panels. And I can tell you that the idea of a solar panel being green and environmentally friendly is a farce. Minerals are mined, and land is devastated in order to make additives that go into its components. Fossil fuels are used by boatloads to make the plasticizers and the adhesives that go into laminating these components. And I can tell you that the threat of fire is real. I've had many a discussion with engineers on how to prevent fires, what they can do to mitigate these fires. And it's a great concern to a lot of the engineers there. To hear that they really don't have any concrete answers as to how they're going to prevent fires from happening, or how to fight fires if they happen, not even a monitoring system in place, really is kind of insulting to the residents that have to live in that neighborhood. I can tell you that there have been two fires reported in Lowell Sun. One in Littleton, Mass., and one in Manchester, New Hampshire. You can look up the articles yourself. The fire chief has stated that when these panels catch on fire, because they are solar generated, they continue to produce electricity. This poses a threat of electrocution for the firefighters that show up to fight the fire. The only way to really stop them from generating electricity is to cover them, which is where the foam comes in. I don't believe Lunenburg has adequate technology, foam suppression, or apparatus to fight these fires. Moreover, when these solar panels catch on fire, they emit toxic chemicals into the environment, which become toxic and poisonous to the residents in the area. I really would like better answers from the engineers involved with this project. I think they owe us a comprehensive plan as to how they're going to monitor any fires that may occur. How they intend to fight the fires that occur. And on a more selfish note, I'd like to know how it's going to impact my property values as well. I mean, I heard someone say it has no impact on property values, but I ask you, if you were looking at a piece of property, and it had a golf course on the back of it, or a solar panel on the back of it, which would you pick? It has a most definite effect. Is it then going to affect my fire insurance rates? Are my premiums gonna go up because I have a solar farm in the back of my house? I mean, these are all things that I think the residents deserve answers to. And I'm disappointed that really no thought has been put into this, and that we got no concrete definitive answers from the people in charge of the project. Now, I'm not trying to, you know, obstruct what's going on here. But I feel like the mentality here is that, as far as the residents go, we'll get nothing unlike it. And I don't think that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to respond, we, we still do have some of those lingering questions, and we would expect answers as well.
And my understanding from the fire chief's response was that we don't have any equipment, but we, we do have training?
Yes.
Training, no equipment?
We're trained to use the equipment we don't have.
No, the training is how to deal with.
Fire.
Basically, let it burn and protect the outside. Don't touch the panels.
Good evening. Ron Smith, ten twenty-six Northfield Road. I think I'm uniquely qualified for both the applicant and as an abutter, to speak on both sides of the subject. As most of you may know, my previous partner, who sits in the audience as well, and I have bought fifty acres a few years ago, went for your board, and we disturbed a large tract of land. But we didn't disturb fifty acres of it. Mr. Augustus isn't disturbing ninety-eight acres of his land. But we did follow the bylaws of the town, which I think was important. The town pointed them out, and we met them. You had some new bylaws that were in place at that time, just like a lot of these bylaws are relatively new for solar. It's a new field. So, I see what both sides of the coin, and have lived both sides of this coin. I spoke to you several weeks ago, and I said I'm not an opponent of this, and I still stand by that. I don't want to obstruct somebody's right to try to utilize their land. I didn't want anybody to obstruct mine. But as a neighbor, I had concerns. And Mr. Augustus's team, before I could even speak to it, had presented a, you know, an easel board there, and said pretty much in the very forefront, kinda don't look at this last week or last month, because they were already planning to move the biggest thing I saw. And that was the first time I saw anything, even though I've been an abutter for actual occupancy about four months, but owned the land, bought it from Mr. Augustus himself. So, it didn't bother me, and that starts to feel selfish, because I knew something I wouldn't like, which was exactly what was on that plan. But they jumped the gun and said, "Don't look at this plan, because we're already making changes." So, I've seen them now, and again, that benefits me, but it's a selfish thing. Having met with Greg, and I told Adam after your meeting a month ago, that you guys spoke just at the last few moments, and said maybe what we need to do is go out there and look at some of these people's properties, and look up from their backyards and see. And apparently, hearing this conversation tonight, some of you have. Greg approached me, and I brought him out there, so he could see behind myself, Steve Anderson, and Chris. And actually, since that meeting, you know, and having the plan that he brought, it was the first time we put dimension to the drawing. And we did stand in those yards, and we looked. And to be honest, again, it really doesn't affect me. It's twelve hundred feet behind me. I'm not gonna see it, I'm not gonna hear it, I'm not gonna see that driveway. There'll be some construction stuff, there is always, and it goes away. But I sold Chris that land, and I sold Steve that land. And the bottom line is, after having seen the horseshoe design here that night, but not being able to go out there and put it in perspective until that morning, a week or so ago, days ago, I'm here as a proponent for Chris. He is going to be adversely impacted by this, more than I think anybody on New West Townsend, clearly, more than myself. His new home, his new barn structure is right on the line of his property, which would have been just sitting in the middle of nowhere, which is what he expected to buy. It's what I thought I sold him to. So, again, respecting Mr. Augustus's right to try to petition something for the benefit of the golf course in his future, I don't object to it, but I do stand on Chris's side, even though this is selfishly not affecting me in a way that I feel is equal to Chris's. So, I wanna be a proponent for him. If this project cannot be denied, then it needs to be modified. It needs to be modified, just like they just modified it tonight. They moved some panels. They may not have increased the size of it, but because Conscom said, "You know what? We don't like this area, you're too close to the wetlands, we don't wanna see the fences." They modified that to keep the project on track, and put it up closer to me. And that's okay with me. I think you're also right on with the buffer that the golf course fairway gets, differing from the buffer from my immediate back line, which doesn't bother me, but it bothers my two buyers who bought from me, because that puts them right in the line of fire. They buffer me, frankly. But Chris is affected more than you and Steve, because that thing wraps right around him. It comes right up to the side of his house. He's gonna see it all day long. The type of buffering that they're proposing, I think you're also all on board, at least from the basic opinion I'm getting from your conversations and your comments, is that you're not satisfied with that buffer either. I'm certainly not satisfied with it, but not on my behalf, but on theirs. There is always the ability. I transplanted forty foot trees with excavators and loaders. They're gonna dig that place wide open with excavators and loaders. They can transplant if they want to, and they can put in thirty foot trees if they want to. They can buy twenty foot trees, drive down Route one seventeen. The biggest natural grower that's sitting there has the biggest white pines and arborvitae. Cultured, chronicle shaped perfectly, they're twenty-five feet high, sitting in balls. Truck will pick them up and drop them on site. It's gonna cost money, but twenty million dollar site like that has the money to do it. So, all of these factors in place. I'm still not opposed to it. I think the size of that thing needs to be reduced, because you can't really move much more of those cells to get them away from Chris's property. And getting away from his may seem like I'm not worried about anybody else. Those are the same cells that are gonna be very close to the people down on New West Townsend Road, by the way. So, the project being one of the largest fields out there, it may not be in the best interest of us. It may be in the best interest of NextGen, but not us. So, if reduction is an option, I think it's a very viable, and it's, it's one that would cure, I think, some of the residents who just spoke on New West Townsend. May seem a little less affected, because that thirty percent slope they're talking about, that's that corner. Chris is affected, I don't care what you do over there, if it ain't twenty feet high and sitting on a four foot burn, or something, and you're absolutely right, you're elevated, you're seeing down. Six foot tree, they talk about human sight lines. Chris's yard looks back a hundred and fifty feet, because he has a septic system behind him. And we had to do opening of that forest to put those houses, and design those septic systems. So, you know, that can't be changed, those systems are there, they were engineered. He's gonna stand in his backyard, he's gonna stand on his first floor kitchen window, he's gonna stand on his second floor, and he's gonna see, 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 everything, because he can see it now. So, I really think, it's my opinion, that that system needs to be reduced in size. And that one area that needs to be reduced is the area that immediately impacts him, and all the people that are talking about their view up to it. The rest of it, nobody's talking about the north. You guys spoke about the buffer that's more generous to the fairway than it is to us. That's something you can take over, because again, it don't, it doesn't affect us. If you feel it should be moved that way, be my guest, you know, offer that. But there has to be some elimination. There's no more room to move what needs to be eliminated on that lower peninsula down there. It's in the wet area, it's in the area that everybody is mostly impacted in the worst possible way. So, does it have to be six megs? Maybe not. Just a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bill Augustus, nineteen Burke Street, owner of the subject parcel. Having worked in municipal government for almost thirty years, I understand the position that you're in, I understand your role in the process, and I appreciate the time and energy you put in to doing what you do. I understand the concerns of, of my neighbors. I've, I've heard them, and I've understand the, the concerns of the engineers who wanna put this, this project in place. I think I understand the purpose of zoning, which is to regulate the use of land. Not to prohibit the use of land, but to regulate it in such a way that the land is used responsibly, and also in a fashion that is not going to cause undue harm to others who seek to use their property. We are here with this application to be allowed to use our land for something more than the backyard of many, many residents. Earlier, you heard that, that this parcel of thirty-six acres was twenty-five percent of our property. That is not true. It is only fourteen point six percent of the total property that we own. The golf course consumes maybe fifty to fifty-five acres out of a two hundred and fifty acre parcel. And this parcel is thirty-six acres of the total two fifty.
Sorry to interrupt, so the other part of the golf course is part of this parcel as well?
For the purposes of zoning, yes, it is.
Because it's under common ownership?
Because it's under common ownership, so it's two hundred and fifty acres all in. Our goal, in going this route for the use of some portion of our property, was how can we use it in the least intensive way possible, and still be able to generate some revenue to assist us in keeping the golf course operating? I don't know if you've seen the golf course recently, or you've been up there, and you've seen, we've done quite a bit of work. But golf courses are marginal businesses right now. And we would like to be able to ensure the long-term financial viability of that, that facility. I believe at least some of the people who purchased the property across, which now is going to abut the solar farm, did so because of the wonderful views they have of the golf course. We would like to, them to be able to continue to see that golf course flourish, and we'll improve it and make it even nicer than it is now. But we also need to understand that we have a lot of property. And while it, you know, we wanna maintain as much open space as possible, we have to use some of it in order to, to meet our, our business goals long term. I can tell you that my wife and I and my partner, none of us are, I don't think anyone's more in tune with the environment than, as we are. We recycle every single bottle and can that's generated up there. We see the value in solar energy. We think that keeping the balance of the property, roughly eighty-five percent of the total property, undeveloped, as a corridor for wildlife, habitat for wildlife, and as, and as a place for our neighbors to enjoy. And believe me, they have enjoyed it. I mean, there are paths, there are roads out back. I talked to many people who take their dogs and, and walk the trails and what have you. And it goes all the way, way, way back. I mean, if you walk from one end of the golf course to the edge of our property and the other side, you can walk a mile and stay on the property. So, there's still gonna be plenty of land available for people, animals, and the environment. Do we need to cut thirty-five acres of trees? I guess we do. Can these engineers be a little more sensitive to the needs of a couple of our neighbors who seem to be a little more impacted than others? And I hope they can, and I will urge them to do that. But I hope that you'll understand that we, too, are taxpayers here in the community. We play, we pay a significant amount of taxes. And we wanna keep the, the golf course going, as it has been going. And we're asking for the approval to use a small fraction of our total land holdings for what is considered to be clean energy. And I know that it, it uses fossil fuels to build these things and, and what have you. But my sense is that over a twenty year period of time, we reduce the carbon footprint somewhat. And that that is what the country seems to be striving to do. We think this is a way for us to contribute to that. And to maintain the open space status and recreation status of the balance of our property. and recreation status of the balance of our property. So I understand you have to do your due diligence, and I just hope that you can be clear in what conditions you will require us to follow in order to get this project approved. I don't think anybody wants to go to the mat over any little thing here or there. I think that, and I am hopeful that this can all be worked out, but I will say that I do think it's unrealistic for everybody to think that nobody is going to be able to see any of this from anywhere. But I'm not sure that under zoning, that is a reasonable thing to expect. I mean, you can have five vacant lots next to you, and all of a sudden, someone puts up an ugly house and paints it paint. Those things happen. We can try to be as sensitive as we can within the bounds of zoning and hopefully come to some reasonable accommodation with the town and with our neighbors. We want to be good neighbors. I think we have been good neighbors to the people in this room, and we would like to continue to do that with the caveat that we really would like to be able to use a portion of our property for what we believe to be one of the least obtrusive uses that it could be put to. With respect to the issues of water and the fire department, we have several wells on the property. We'd be happy to have them be able to tap into our water supply. We have a full irrigation system on the golf course. It produces like 90 PSI of water pressure and quite a bit of water on the site. So, I mean, if they're looking to fight the fire by treating it as a brush fire and contain it, then they're going to want water. And one of the purposes, and one of the ways you fight brush fires is to have a non-vegetated buffer around the entire facility. And this is exactly what they're proposing to do here. So I just hope you will take those things into consideration, and I can assure you, I will do all that I can do to work with NextGen to come up with some changes that will, you know, meet the concerns that you have. And I would just ask you to be clear with us what conditions you will require in order for us to gain your approval at some point, hopefully in the not-too-distant future.
I have one question.
Yes.
In this, did you consider one be, which is the land, you know, the other half of this land behind it? Did you consider for this to be on that land instead?
We did consider that.
Why did you rule that out?
Because it would have required a river crossing. There is a river that goes beyond, behind our 15 that goes all the way across the property, and crossing a river with utilities and all of that is very, very difficult, together with the ground conditions up in that area. I mean, it just seemed that this was, this was the area that made the most sense of development. I was always under the impression that we would have adequate buffers around it, but I was never thought that it would not be able to be seen at all from somewhere, particularly in the winter months. And unfortunately, it may be seen by some of the people, as you suggest, over on New West Townsend Road. I don't know. But I will tell you this. I mean, the highest point on that golf course is the 15. It's way up and top of this big rock. And if you stand down on North Field Road, you can't see that tee. And if you stand on that top spot and you look down to North Field Road, you cannot see it. There is enough vegetation, and that's even taking the fact that there are no big trees on the golf course, and it's a straight line that you can see down. You can't see that. Now, I'm not going to try to convince you that it won't be seen from anywhere. I just ask you to take into consideration the reasonable requirements of a local taxpayer as well. Thank you.
Thank you. In response to that, I just, so I am very much aware that you are resident and a taxpayer. My end game is to make sure we have a project that you're never going to make anybody happy, but there's nothing more than I like than granting approvals because that means it's a project that I feel is appropriate and that somewhat works for everyone. I actually saw you to wear my heart on my sleeve a little bit at the grocery store with your wife, and she reached out and grabbed your hand, and so that's the human factor for me. So, and I think we are governed by the bylaw, but I very much keep that in mind, so.
If I can add, make a comment as well. I think that I, the bylaws establish, in my opinion, you know, based on my seat, I'm the newest member of this board, but, you know, the bylaws establish the framework that we operate under, and no matter the community opposition to a plan, that we have to listen to it, we have to consider it, but at the end of the day, on the developer's side, we have a set of rules that you are supposed to comply with. And our decision is really basically, do you comply with them or not? And, you know, sometimes in the conversation with the residents, we can learn that maybe moving forward, there are things that we can probably adjust. I don't believe that this plan meets our bylaw for multiple reasons, as I've outlined today. This plan requires four of us to vote yes, and as for multiple reasons I've outlined today, I hope that you guys will take the time to review them. I've tried to give you specific areas in our bylaw. I've quoted them directly this week and last to give you ideas for why I'm not satisfied. I understand where you're coming from. I don't, I think this plan misses the mark. I think it misses the mark not on your side. I understand what you're trying to do. I think that for the residents who live downhill, they have the right to get an environmental impact report that says this is the result of all this stuff. I think it's, you know, I think it's unfair that we have, that we get a blurb that says there is no environmental impact. That's unreasonable. I think it's not fair that we've been living in this town for a long time, and I've heard last, you know, the last meeting and this meeting, that Unitil, it's two separate systems, the way you can connect. But you know what would be really nice? If Unitil would write a letter that says that, because Unitil is refusing, we're not refusing, Unitil won't do that. Unitil is not making a statement that there will be no impact on the rest of town after six megawatts gets connected. They just haven't done that. It would be nice if they did. The other things that, you know, the other problems, as I mentioned earlier today with this, with the fire stuff, I agree. There are ways to mitigate this stuff. This plan doesn't meet it. You know, the fire plan says Lunenburg Fire Department is going to respond, and they're going to do X, Y, and Z. But Lunenburg Fire Department hasn't said that. Lunenburg Fire Department doesn't have that coordination with them. So I hope that the seven different areas that I've identified last week and this week do get addressed. I think it's reasonable. You know, we have to think about what's in the, you know, the very beginning of this bylaw gives like a blurb, and it says, you know, all these different areas that we're, and David was kind of referencing this, all these different areas that we're supposed to find. We're supposed to find this is keeping with the good rural nature of the town. We're supposed to find that this is in keeping with good public order. This doesn't. I mean, I don't think that that's even a question, but I think it can. So I certainly hope that you guys will hear what has been said. This is no slight to you, your business, what you're trying to do. I hope that they can hear what's being said. I hope you can hear what the residents are being said. And as I said last week, I think it's unfortunate that you didn't first approach the residents to mitigate them. You mitigated one person who's sitting behind you, one person, but you didn't mitigate anybody else. That's not reasonable. I mean, this gentleman stood up and said to you, I bought this land, I built, and I mentioned last meeting, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of homes being built right there. This gentleman is planning his future in this town, and you haven't even talked to him. Like, that's not fair. That's just not fair. And, but fairness isn't what we're trying to evaluate. We're trying to evaluate whether this meets the condition of the bylaw. I have a hard time finding good order and discipline, 34 acres of clear cutting. I'm struggling over here. I think I can get there, but I'm struggling very hard right now.
Yeah, I would concur. It's a reasonable point to make, but I, I am appreciative of Mr. Augustus' honesty about why he's doing this and what it means to his, to his business and his partner, and as well as the honesty of the neighborhood that comes out and, you know, tells us reasonably what they expect. And I think that's what they have a right to. We all have a right to a strict interpretation of the bylaw, if you will. So that's where I come from.
I'd like to see the planning board put forth a discreet list of requirements that if were met, they would approve this plan. And if we can come up with that list to deliver to the engineering firm, then they would have the opportunity to look at the requirement list and identify whether or not this project is still viable and can meet that requirement list. Because I think our requirements go beyond what's in the bylaw based on the discussions that I've heard tonight. That's my feedback to the board.
Thank you for saying that, Ken. I agree with the previous two comments, and I'll restate my previous comment that it seems that you addressed multiple issues and comments for conservation and, again, zero for planning board. I think we were fairly clear about our concerns, and as far as a enumerated list of things, I don't think that's reasonable. I think that, given a different membership of this board, that this may be approved. Who knows? But it is, it is not up to us to dictate. It is up to us to approve. Reasonable guidance, which I feel that we gave to you last meeting, is, I think, what we are charged with. We are charged with protecting the town, the people, and the environment, and right now, I don't see that this is doing that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm pretty much on the same page. I think the information is there in the bylaw. It's not really our job to make you understand it. It's there for everyone to see. I don't think that any of the direction we gave either at the last meeting or this meeting is in any way unreasonable or prohibitive of the project, in my opinion. It might take some modifications, but in my opinion, I think moving forward, we still have the chance to have a project that satisfies the needs of the abutters and the needs of the property owner, so. And I'm happy to provide any direction or input moving forward, so.
Well, I'd like to talk about Ken's suggestion for a second, if we may. Just, I mean, is it a reasonable suggestion at this point to see if we can put together a discreet list? You know, some number of things.
Call it guidance, as Matthew referred to it. If they came back and they changed the buffer from 50 feet to 200 feet, would that be enough? Probably not. If they, if they added it to 200 feet and then put three rows of evergreens, would that be enough? What is the, do they have to be 40 feet high buffers? What is the expectation of, you know, as was stated by the land, by the owner of the property? Does the majority of the board expect that everybody could go to the limit of their property and look out into this land that they don't own and not see anything other than what they see today? And if that, is that the expectation of the board? And if that is the expectation of the board, then we should let the owner know so they can try to adhere to that. Is the expectation that if they look out their kitchen window, they don't see anything, but if they go into the second floor, well, they're going to see the solar field? What is the expectation? Because I think without providing that guidance, we could do this for months, just keep going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. They're going to come with an idea that's the minimal idea that they're going to try to put forward. We're going to look at it and say, no. Then they're going to go back with another idea. So I think if we could just cut to the chase, provide them detailed guidance on, if you did this, 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 and this, and none of these people were impacted anymore, then you'd have a much greater chance of getting approved by this body. And that way, they can just go off and assess, do we want to bother with this or not, instead of going back and forth a dozen times.
Right, so my question is, can we, is there a, do we do that in open session? Can we do it by submitting emails to you, come up with a list, review that? How do you want to?
I'm opposed to us even doing that. I think that we're not here to make plans for them. I mean, no offense, but that's not our role. So I think that our role is to approve and recommend. I think that we've talked for two hours. They should have taken some notes, and I think that that's where I stand on this. I'm opposed to us having to stipulate in written form. Why even have an open meeting? Why even have a hearing if that's just what we're going to do?
Well, I think I'll answer David's question. It's something that you can do. It's something many boards do in open session. They say, okay, we've had our deliberations. From the deliberations, we feel these are the deficiencies in the plan, I think, you know, or we feel that these items in the plan need to be adjusted. I don't think you necessarily need to say, if you do these things, we'll approve the plan, but, you know, we're looking for, or our summarization of what you've just heard is this. And I think with the board compiling a list, what you do is you get the five members together, and everybody's now working off of the same page.
Yep.
So you all may have different interpretations of what the last two hours comprised. The applicant may have different understanding of what you were saying or a different interpretation. And so by putting something like that together, what you do is you create a common understanding of where the project should be going to be moving in a positive direction. It's not necessarily binding, but, and it doesn't need to be specific. It can be, it can be a more global, you know, here's something we would like you to address. Here's some ways that we've expressed that we feel is deficient, and it's up to them to then find a way that they can put together something for you to look at and approve. I don't think you're necessarily designing. I don't think you're doing your work for them. You're giving them a targeted response as a group to the proposal that they've brought to you that reflects the conversation that's been had.
Mm-hmm.
I think it might be productive to go over the waiver requests and see if there's some that we can firmly say that we don't want to grant that or that that sounds reasonable. And I think that the ones that we don't want to grant, the information gained from the submission would potentially clarify or help us move forward with liking this better, with having it be a more appropriate.
That would be a board decision. I mean, you're within the public hearing. You're welcome to grant the waivers if you would like.
I was looking here for a request. I didn't see it.
They, yeah, they had it in the booklet.
I believe it's in written form.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ken, are you making a motion that we should do this?
There was no motion.
No, there was no motion. That was just.
It was just a discussion.
Just to clarify, are you wanting to address waivers, just waivers we think that we're not willing to grant?
No, I think he was talking about the earlier stuff, Ken's suggestion about putting together a list.
To have some forward progression.
Yeah, it wasn't a motion. At least I don't believe it was a motion.
I kind of feel like we regurgitated the last meeting so far.
I know where my line in the sand is, so I'm not afraid to tell them that, and.
I think you two has a record from last meeting and this one that maybe you should watch again.
You certainly do.
And we have a lot of notes and comments and statements. I mean, I think we're all professionals here, and respectfully, I have to say, I really appreciate the level of professionalism that you guys are demonstrating. I do. I think that you guys did certainly make an attempt to go back and, you know, look at some of our concerns. But I'm here with a computer and with notes, and I mean, I think that you guys can do the same thing.
The problem, if I may, I mean, the problem is we're doing that, and we are trying very hard to be responsive, but we are hearing five different voices from five different members who naturally have different questions and different concerns. And, for example, from you, I think I heard at least two new ones tonight that we didn't talk about the last time. So to the extent that the board can collectively with one voice, and it doesn't have to be tonight, but to the extent. and it doesn't have to be tonight, but to the extent that the board can collectively either through a vote of its members or through uh the the planning director, uh give us the board's guidance that that would be helpful to the conversation from my perspective. I I offer that.
I think historically, we have done that. Um but also, I think, to Michael's point, that we have been fairly clear with a lot of our concerns and they have been consistent over the last two meetings. Um I'd actually like to request since our town council is here. Um I have some questions for him that maybe might be helpful if anybody has any objections to hearing from him since he's here.
Not at all, Mr. Chair.
Uh can I just ask, where is the I'm having trouble finding the.
Yeah.
It's not in here.
It's not in the table of content.
I think if we have to kind of sit down and get to put our heads together to figure out what kind of plans.
For your list of uh.
Waiver requests.
I thought I submitted it um with the revisions.
Okay, it wasn't in this.
Yeah, I that's the original. There's a packet that was submitted.
Okay, I probably haven't. Just I got to find it.
Sorry, Rob, if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, Adam, I'm sorry.
Flowering.
I heard a question being directed towards me.
So basically, to Ken's point, I know at times we are we do give direction. Um is there a way for us to continue the meeting and at the next meeting, just have board discussion and not take testimony from the applicant? Or is that? So that it's still done in open meeting, everybody has ability to hear, but just basically to let us deliberate in some fashion on, I mean, again, because I don't want to come back to the next meeting with another proposal and just go over the same items that we've already discussed. So, sorry.
Sure. So um both the statute, chapter 48, section nine, and your bylaw refer to a quote-unquote "public hearing." Doesn't specify whether that's something that must occur in a single evening or whether that's something that can occur over multiple sessions. The presumption is, and the law states that it can certainly occur over multiple sessions. The only requirement, of course, is that you continue it from time to time to a date in time certain. Uh there's nothing that requires as part of a multi-session public hearing that you solicit comment or input from the applicant at every session of that hearing. There's nothing that requires you to take public comment at every session of that hearing. In fact, I know some boards that in a multi-session public hearing will address engineering on the first night, traffic on the second night, uh environmental issues on the third night, lighting on the fourth night, and public comment on the fifth night. And for the first four meetings, there is no public comment. There's nothing in the law that prohibits that. Uh other boards will solicit a bit of public comment, maybe on the topic of the day or of the night at each session of a public hearing. So certainly, if it was the board's prerogative, you could have a further session of the public hearing. And at that further session of the public hearing, which you'd give notice of tonight so the public could be present, so that they could listen in, as could the applicant, you would have an opportunity then to I don't want to use the term deliberate because that suggests that the public hearing might be closed, but you could talk amongst yourselves about the concerns of the day uh with the project and give some feedback to the applicant. You could permit limited input from the applicant. You could engage in 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 back and forth dialogue with the applicant if you so choose. You wouldn't necessarily need to permit any further public comment on that night. Again, that's the board's prerogative.
So what about the communication of whatever comes from that to the applicant? That wouldn't be in a public forum?
It would. It would be. This would be this would be a continued session of the public hearing.
So we would have to make it we would have to verbalize whatever we want in like, say, a document so that it's a part of the public record before it gets typed up?
Well, I I wouldn't suggest typing anything up. So you're you're in the midst of a public hearing.
Okay.
Uh you're also bound by the open meeting law.
Right.
You can't go into executive or closed session
Right.
uh with a quorum of your board. Uh so you'd be meeting just as you are tonight. The only difference would be you wouldn't lead off with a presentation by the applicant. You wouldn't be inviting public comment. You'd just be essentially working the meeting through the chair. You'd be all speaking amongst yourselves, raising your various concerns. The applicant presumably would attend.
Okay.
Would be a few feet away and would be taking notes vigorously and would then respond to those concerns. And again, you could invite that those responses or that input. My suggestion is always that there be some sort of a limited dialogue because you may propose something and you may come to a consensus that there needs to be a 250-foot buffer surrounding this particular project. But the applicant may know that it simply can't build this project financially or otherwise with a 250-foot buffer. There ought to be that back and forth because why waste the rest of that evening talking about all sorts of other requirements if the applicant knows five minutes in that they simply can't build the project with a 250-foot buffer? So some limited dialogue makes sense, but I can appreciate the concern of the board that you don't want every session to be two, three hours with public input with a lengthy presentation by the applicant. You just want to have some discussion amongst yourselves and get some direct feedback from the applicant on the issues that are of concern.
And I don't want them to waste the time and money to re-engineer something that we're not even going to consider
Right.
after the discussion. I mean, that's I think if that approach benefits everyone, I mean, we could do it tonight, but it's now nine o'clock. And as far as that continuance, um usually our continuance have to be from the applicant. Um how would we address that? Would we just continue on our own?
They don't have to be, but when the applicant requests it, then we get into to timing.
I would prefer they be agreeable to it. I mean, um.
And I'll ask Adam because I don't know enough about the process that's already underway. I just thought I'd stick around to get a little bit of a sense because I I knew what was before you tonight. Um where are you in the process now? So public hearing was advertised. This is your second or third session?
Public hearing. So we're you know, we're 30 days into the public hearing.
Okay. Um so I don't generally have a concern. I mean, you have the authority to continue it of your own volition without permission of the applicant.
Mm-hmm.
Um most boards will seek permission of the applicant if for no other reason than simply to coordinate schedules, determine a date in which you're all available. Um so I would certainly recommend that you have that discussion. You know, I I I think you've all made, you know, very good comments toward the latter part of the meeting tonight with respect to the concerns that each of you have individually with procedure, uh process, whether you ought to provide the applicant with a list of requests or whether it ought to be the applicant's responsibility to be taking notes in a meeting like tonight and be responsive to that. I I think, and I work with a lot of different boards, and every board has its own style, and I'm not here to tell you how to run your business. Um I think that there's something to be said for providing input to the applicant, particularly if you've got individual members that have strong feelings about X, Y, or Z. That doesn't need to come from the board as a whole. If you you may not have a consensus amongst you that there ought to be any feedback given to the applicant. You may be of the position, Michael, you said earlier, that you should be here. You should be taking notes. You can watch the YouTube video. I'm not going to put that into an enumerated list for you in an email. Do your job. And others may say, well, you know what? I've got some comments and concerns that I want to put on paper. It helps me. Maybe it helps the applicant, and I feel that responsibility. You can each have different ideas as to what um you should be offering as a board member. You can always offer that input directly through uh either the chair or or through uh your director, back to the applicant individually, only speaking for yourselves, obviously, which is the only way you'd be speaking outside of a public meeting anyway. If there's a majority amongst you that wants to provide some feedback, it only takes a majority to act. You need a supermajority, obviously, to issue the final determination, but it only takes a majority of the board to act. If you've got a majority that says, well, we want to put a list together that at least represents the interest of the majority as it stands today, you can certainly do that as well.
Sorry to interrupt. So we could have if we had a quorum of three people, we could still have the discussion without because we wouldn't be voting at the time.
Right. So here's the catch. Um if you're continuing the public hearing to a further session, you have a quorum of three people, you're losing voting members. That's still a session of the public hearing. It's not a work session. Sometimes boards think, and this is another option you have, and again, many boards I represent do it, that, well, you know what? We we want to we want to really um get down to the nitty-gritty here. And we're not doing that in these meetings. We're trying to take some public comment. We're we're talking big picture, but we want to get into the details. And it's really hard to do that with five members. So they have work sessions and you have one or two members, not a quorum, present that work session, not a session of the public hearing, not open to the public, although you're always welcome to invite members of the public if you so choose, but you're not required to. Open meeting law doesn't require it. It's not a session of the public hearing. You talk about some aspects of the project. You try to give some feedback through a couple of members to the applicant. The applicant maybe makes some modifications to the project as a consequence, and then you come back to the continued public hearing, possibly with more more input, more feedback, uh more development in the project than might have occurred if the the applicant feels it hasn't gotten what it needs out of a meeting like you've had tonight. That's another option.
All right. And we could include Adam if we did it individually or as two at a time, and then how would we present those results in a public meeting or?
That's correct. So typically, what happens after a work session is those that member or a couple of members, sometimes it's one, sometimes it's two, will show up at the next session of the public hearing, of course, as as the full board would, and would report back to the board what occurred. Adam can certainly be present. He's not a board member, so he doesn't affect open meeting law requirements, quorum requirements at all. So he could be present as well. Maybe it's one of you and Adam. Um and then he can obviously report back to the board as well at that next session of the public hearing. So that's a possibility.
Because I see it. I think you're right. It gives us the opportunity to kind of cut to the chase on some of the larger issues. I mean, these people come out and spend their time. I don't want to waste their time. I don't want to waste the applicant's time and money with engineering that we're not going to consider. So I guess we have basically two choices. We could either meet and take limited um input from the public or the applicant and come up with a clear list of what our sticking points are, or we could do it individually and and give them a list and give them I I I would prefer we all do it together. I think we work well together in that capacity. Um our our viewpoints might be different, but I think we'll get right to the heart of the matter. So that's that's where I come in, so.
I think that my opinion is I think we've addressed the bylaw tonight. I mean, all that we're looking at is, does this comply with the bylaw? And I think we've answered that. I mean, I think we've addressed it over and over and over again. And it it seems to me as if the applicant isn't hearing it. Um so I mean, I I don't I don't know what I can do for them, but I I've been pretty clear. So I I I am I do not think that it's, my opinion, I don't think that I think even if we get three of us to meet and do this or four of us, you know, it still doesn't account for I think it creates this idea that we're all going to vote yes if you meet these conditions. And that's not I don't I don't think that's reasonable. I think that what's reasonable is that in the public hearing that that people come to present their ideas or present their plans and that we, in our capacity, evaluate if it meets the conditions of the bylaw and then vote to approve it. And I think that in this hearing process, I think we've given them substantial reasons why they have failed to adequately address them. That's how I perceive it so far. That doesn't mean that next week they can they won't. Maybe they will go back and look through six hours of YouTube and make some changes. Maybe they won't. But I don't think it's in our I don't think it's in our advantage for us to spend more time doing things than, in my opinion, they already should have done or should be doing.
I don't disagree with you. One more question. Uh are they at liberty to contact us as individual members and ask us, hey, you know, you touched on this point. Could you elaborate?
Uh there's nothing in the law that prohibits them from doing so. Uh there's no equivalent of sort of ex parte contact.
Okay.
My general recommendation to board members, particularly when they're in the midst of a deliberative process and adjudicatory process, is that they not engage in direct conversations with an applicant.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, each one of you can only express your own views. Um I I do often recommend to boards that if each of you has individual viewpoints or things that you want to make known to the applicant and you don't believe you've had an opportunity to do so at a public meeting, that you could certainly send uh correspondence to your staff person or your chair and then get it to the applicant so the applicant can maybe respond to that at the next meeting. But you also that often happens when you've got board members that maybe will miss a meeting and they want to get some input for the applicant before the next meeting. You're all here tonight. You've all been very outspoken in terms of what your concerns are, what your comments are, what your recommendations are. Um I've I've been sitting in the back of the room and I'm quite clear as to where each of you stands and what each of your concerns are. So it's up to you as to whether or not you feel that's necessary.
Okay, thank you.
And sorry, so who would they question in the meantime? So say we just to say, you know what? We've said what we've had to say. We're going to continue to the next hearing. If there's some confusion on their end as to what they would go to.
You go to Adam.
You've you've got the benefit of the staff person. That question that gets asked in many communities and mass uses, the answer is nobody. You wait till the next meeting.
Well, no, and I have the utmost confidence that if there is confusion, Adam has on many occasions told me he's re-watched meetings and.
He is confused.
All right, now.
So I guess we need to decide. I mean, I I'd probably just prefer to go down the line. If you feel you've been clear with your instructions and you don't feel we need to clarify anymore, they should have enough information and maybe we can encourage them to re-watch the meetings.
Yeah, I think I have, in my opinion, I think I have been clear. I I made a point to make a list. I know my notes tonight coming in here are already written. Um I already have all the references. If they take the time to review what was actually stated, I consistently listed sections. I I was very direct with our bylaw and the conflicts with the bylaw. So if they did not choose to write that down as I stated it, then the meeting will be posted tomorrow, probably. And I think that they will have a perfect opportunity to go back through and say, hey, you know what? He did say 4.15, 4.12, and this was his comment. And uh so I I'm I think I've been clear.
Dave?
I agree. I think if I have anything more to add, I would send it now that I know that I can, I think I would just send it along to uh through through uh Mr. Bernie.
Ken?
I don't think there's anything that I said this evening that needs clarification. Um my uh I made my statements at the first meeting and um I think everybody here reiterated my statements from the first meeting at least once, except maybe Matthew.
I heard you.
So uh I I don't think there's any confusion that the the confusing part for me as a board member is I I know what my expectation is for the limits around the buffering, but I don't know what the rest of the boards is. And that's why I was asking the question of what's acceptable. There is what's in the bylaw, but the bylaw is also subjective in sections because it says the board can expect more than what is documented. And so if they come in and they say, okay, we changed it from 50 to 200 feet, we reduced it from six megawatts to five megawatts, and we put these trees in, is that good enough? And we say, no, I I still go over here. I look up the hill. I can still see it. That's not good. So that there is this subjective area that is beyond the letter of the bylaw that is what this board gets to to vote on. And the only reason I thought that giving some concrete information back was just to avoid the back and forth. That that was it. So you know, I I think I would expect that it would have a minimal visual impact for the abutters because that does impact their properties. I think it does impact their property values. Certainly, we don't want water running off and flooding their yards and things like that. So there's all the stuff that is really covered there. But then there's also the, you know, the subjective part, and that's what I wasn't sure if we could give them some kind of feedback on where we really are. Someplace between what the bylaw says and you can go on every abutting property and see no solar panel in the middle of winter. Right? So someplace in between there is what we consider acceptable from a visual perspective. And I wasn't sure where we actually as a board lie.
Can I just ask you, did have you gone and inspected the abutting?
Yeah, I've I've actually been down on that property a lot of time. As a matter of fact, I've used that property as a recreational purpose for years of my life.
Because that's what I did. I mean, I walked just along the rear property line. It says developed or not, so basically the abutters behind me, that's wasn't my concern. It was what I was looking at. Um and again, I took measurements of 50 feet. To me, was not even close.
No, no, I I I won't disagree with you on on the 50-foot.
Okay, yeah, I just. If if anybody has concerns about the visual buffers, I could would encourage them to go just walk the property line along.
Sure, but even 200 feet can can not be enough as well, right? So like I said, it all depends on where your expectation is. And just because you moved from 50 to 200 feet doesn't mean that it's not going to impact someone that's right on that property line and their house looks right at the the solar farm.
But you you know, again, you can't do their homework for me. There are things that we've covered over the years, over, you know, three now or whatever. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Sorry to interrupt, but I think I've heard the three of you have stated your case very clearly. I'd like to move on to Matthew so that we can just take action and
Okay.
not stay any longer if we don't have.
To follow on Ken's comment, uh back and forth would require that we give input and you make revisions, and then we give further input and you make further revisions. The only revisions that I seen that you've done in regard to our previous input is put more panels on here. You've addressed the technical requirements that are federally mandated by the Whatless Protection Act that were required by the Conservation Commission. There were more subjective comments that they had made. They I don't see anything that addresses them. No, I I refuse to be the developer. We are the board members. We approve what you bring before us. And I think that we've been more than clear. And I think that we've been pretty close to unanimous on the clarity that we've given. So to to comment on what you'd said earlier, you don't have to make one body happy. You have to make four individuals on that five-member body happy.
Sure.
Or five. And and.
Or five.
Get all five.
I and I appreciate I appreciate that. I have some videotape to watch. I think I think the last time I left the meeting, they were actually starting the replay tonight, so if I get home quick enough, maybe.
It should be available tomorrow.
They're on YouTube, and you can actually request it through PAC and they'll email it to you.
To to make your your job easier in one respect, if it helps you procedurally, we're happy to request a continuance.
I think that would be in the best interest of everyone at this point.
Well, it also sounds like the board wants to.
Well, it also sounds like the board wants to sit down and have that separate discussion, so it would really just be when, when you'll be turning plans around to resubmit.
Our, our goal would be to be on your agenda for the next meeting, so when would you require those plans?
The Tuesday before the meeting.
Well, our next meeting is, is the 25th, 23rd, sorry.
It's a holiday.
So it would be the 16th, or the 17th at four, which is the Tuesday before that meeting.
Does that work?
And actually, you're rescheduled to go back to the Conscom on the fourth or fifth?
They haven't invited me to that party yet.
Oh, well.
There'll be a party.
And then they meet with the Board of Selectmen, I think, on Tuesday, so.
So that, that works for our schedule.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks.
The 23rd.
Jeff?
Sure, Mr. Graves. Sorry, Mr. Walsh. I'm making you a partner. Look at that.
Excuse me, I'm on a board. Does someone have to?
Well, not if Jeff's going to speak.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
About making the motion to continue?
Yeah.
Well, because he's got testimony within.
By all means.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the promotion. I appreciate that. Good evening. For the record, my name is Jeff Walsh. I'm with Graves Engineering, peer review consultant for the planning board. I came here tonight, gentlemen, to speak with you about three different issues, none of which I want to speak to you about after hearing the testimony for the last two and a half hours.
Do you want to speak to us about anything?
I came prepared to speak about the peer review letter that I just issued late this afternoon that was in response to plans I received last week. Don't even want to talk to you about that. It seems to be secondary to the discussion we had this evening. I also came prepared to talk about, Mr. Allison asked about the effects of changing woods to meadow and with respect to runoff and rainfall. Let's save that for another night. That's an engineering issue, if that's all right with you, gentlemen. And lastly, I came prepared to talk about the, the construction cost estimate for decommissioning surety. I can, I came to speak in more general terms. I reviewed what they submitted. I feel it's on the low end. I do have some information from a number of different projects by a number of different developers, one of which was Nexamp. I can share with that, with you a different evening. It comes in dollars and cents. Basically, I'm feeling they might be about 50% where they need to be, but we can talk more specifically in the future. What I would like to offer up is that after hearing a lot of the discussion this evening about views and so on and so forth, I wanted to offer up a suggestion. I won't even call it a recommendation. It's not unusual for solar projects or projects with tall buildings. I've had this a few times with 40Bs, tall buildings in a, in a subdivision area that's, that's low buildings, to have a balloon test. And obviously, you can't have a balloon test to judge a visual on the ground of a project such as this, but maybe you could have something similar. There's been different, different, a lot of different testimony, but generally speaking, the woods sound pretty thin. Well, what I was thinking is why not use some wide flagging of a certain color that doesn't blend in with the woods and flag at about the height of the top of the solar panels, the corners of the solar panels, at whatever areas you're interested in. For example, the southern end nearest Northfield Road, and possibly up some of the west line, depending on how far you feel you need to go. And so it's, okay, that's a good idea, but what about if you can't see through the area of the woods that are going to be cleared or cleared and stumped? So my suggestion is two rows of flagging, one of a particular color at, at a particular height of the panels, at the panels, and another one at the limits of clearing. Two different colors. If you see one color, you see the other color. If anything else, you can have a visual of what's going to be, what you're going to have out there without relying on renderings, without relying on photos and simulating other things. Just food for thought. It may work, it may not, but the point is we're coming into the leaf, leaf drop season, and if the flagging was to go up pretty quick, you might get to see it before the leaves drop, and you certainly see it shortly after the leaves drop. Oranges and reds may not work. Greens are probably a problem. White, blue, I don't know, pink, yellow, I'll leave it to you. But two different colors, and I'm thinking something about this wide, like you might see for flagging on utilities when utilities are buried. That's all I wanted to share with you because it seemed to be applicable to this evening.
Thanks for hanging in there.
Was the promotion worth the loss of hair, Jeff? Was the promotion worth the loss of hair?
It was.
I believe our town attorney would like to speak again. Please do.
I don't want to overstate my welcome. You raised something, Adam, that caused me to think, and I reviewed your bylaw. So your 90 days runs from the date of filing of the application, which is a bit unusual. So you mentioned this is the second session of the public hearing. I know you've got 65 days to open the hearing. So I, in the event that you utilize the full 65 days, you could be coming up, or even if you used half of that, you could be coming up
We're probably in about 50 right now.
Okay.
I thought it was 90 from the first public hearing.
That's what, that's what standard special permit is. Apparently, our bylaw is a hot mess.
In fact, the standard special permit is 90 days from the close of the public hearing.
Oh, to issue, yeah.
To issue. So you've got an unlimited period of time typically to continue your public hearings, but your bylaw provides 90 days from the date of filing. So I just want to be sure that you're not going to run afoul of that and somehow essentially constructively grant the permit, so.
Can they withdraw and then resubmit?
The applicant can. You can also just get permission from the applicant to extend that deadline at any time.
Well, I think, I think that's where your perception of the continuance request comes from us, comes from, because I think historically, the town has had applicants extend that deadline. So maybe that's what I should be agreeing to, not just a continuance, but agree to extend that.
That would be, I believe, agreeable to the board. And again, it's in an effort to work together, so.
I, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. That was a positive.
Thank you. That needs to be included in the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so that they're requesting a continuance of the public hearing to a date certain and a continuance of the deadline?
And the extension of the, of the timeframe requirements. What is the date?
October 23rd.
6:35.
And does that just stop the clock? Sorry, if maybe town council, does that just stop the clock, the continuance of the timeline from now until then? Or indefinitely?
So you've got a continuance to your next meeting, I think is what was granted. What I typically recommend, and if you don't have it ready now, you could have it ready for your meeting on October 23rd, would be an actual calculation of the date, the 90-day deadline from the date of filing. That way, when you seek an extension from the applicant, I would typically at a meeting like tonight, rather than seek the extension exactly until the 23rd, I would seek it for, say, a week beyond the 23rd, in the event that you don't get a quorum that night, or something occurs and you can't act on it, you don't effectively constructively grant the permit effective the next day. It sounds like you're still going to be within your 90 days even without the extension that was just granted. I don't know that for sure without knowing the exact calculation.
I haven't voted on that yet. I don't believe so.
So I mean, I guess you, to be extra safe tonight, you could ask the applicant for a one-week extension beyond the 23rd to give you the ability to call an emergency meeting if you needed to. If you couldn't can a quorum that night, it's really up to you. But that's what I would recommend moving forward.
Just on the timeline.
That's correct.
I think I would suggest that. If there's no objections.
If I may, we spoke about meeting, at the next meeting, having just a discussion amongst ourselves, have the applicant here, but we can hash some stuff out, and then going on, correct? So this, if this was our next opportunity.
I felt like that was poo-pooed.
No, ours, we said what we had to say. Do your homework and we'll deal with it at the next meeting.
Right, right. Very good then.
So you're looking for
Well, no, but come with your best foot forward.
So now you're, you're, so would you, you need to ask them if they want to extend that extra week? Is that where we are?
If they were agreeable to it.
We'd be happy to extend that an additional week.
Thank you.
Just for the deadline. Okay, so we need a motion to continue the public hearing until October 23rd.
Correct.
And then an amendment to that motion to request a continu, a, is it continuation or is it a extension of the deadline on our?
Approval.
Approval. So moved would work.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. If, if town council wasn't here, I wouldn't have been so confident.
Yeah. He is, and I'm still not.
I think he explained it a lot better than I could, so I think we're all set. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you really, very much.
I've been thinking about the bylaws since I did 55.
Making moves to get out of here.
Mr. Chair, can we table the remainder of this meeting for our next meeting?
We could administer
No, we, well, not all of it, but I think there's, because there's a deadline regarding the request for the chapter lands, and that's September 30th, so we have to do that. We won't meet in time.
Okay.
But we can, again, under protest.
Yeah.
So, all right, where's my agenda?
It's not here for those.
Huh? No, we have to do the chapter lands because of the deadline on that, right?
So minutes?
Sorry.
We have minutes, sir?
I'm lost.
Yes, you do.
Yep, agenda. Sorry. All right, so we're now on to minutes approval from the executive session from August 30th.
No changes.
August 30th. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
2017. Any comments or amendments?
He knows he's read them.
Oh.
We don't send them around.
I thought I read them.
Maybe, oh, you did.
You did.
Oh, okay. So do we pass them down and do it now? Okay.
I was just bringing up my email to double check.
Is I even invited?
How would we offer amendments if they're
Well, you wouldn't slide it.
So you just say I have an issue with it and we take care of it afterwards?
I think Marguerite does a great job, so I'm confident that it's fine.
Well, David's going to turn to a pumpkin in about 15 minutes, so.
Yeah.
Want to get ahead of the game? There's two pages.
Oh, is there anything in the back?
No. So these are the executive session meetings that are going on?
Yes.
Can we?
Yes, you could do the other ones.
Yeah, do the others?
If any comments on the minutes from September 11th, 2017?
No.
Nope.
Nope.
Doesn't look like it.
He hasn't read those ones either.
Yeah, right. I was going to say.
I can't even comment on that when I wasn't there.
Doesn't require an approval. And the minutes from the Economic Development Workshop, September 12th, 2017.
I have edit. Under the public comment, Heather Bowen, 188 Flat Hill Road, that is my wife and my address, and we are not, we are not limited on our ability to open a commercial kitchen because that's just not it. It's a residential kitchen.
So should I change commercial to residential?
So if, if that, if commercial was stricken and residential was replacing it, then I have no problem.
Is that okay with everyone in your recollection? Okay, so we'll change commercial to residential.
And I think she actually clarified that in her comment, but neither here nor there.
All right. There you go, sir. All right. Are we able to handle finishing reading the minutes and go over committee reports?
Mine will be quick.
Mine will be quick. All right. Capital planning, we met. We're finalizing the spreadsheet. We're just trying to make it more user-friendly and easier for the public to follow. And we should be finalizing it by our next meeting hopefully and distributing it a week or two after that to the departments. Who we got? School building committee. We will be closing out fairly shortly. We're going to be required to have two more meetings before the end of the year to, to close everything out. And then Green Communities Task Force, we actually have a meeting.
Woo-hoo.
So I believe that's next Wednesday.
Who's up?
I'm up.
Stormwater.
Stormwater, we have not met. We will be meeting next Thursday in the Ritter, no, this Thursday, in the Ritter Building, yes. And to follow up with AgCom, they have not met. They had a regularly scheduled meeting last Thursday, which was called because some members weren't going to be there, so I'm going to be double booked this Thursday in the same building.
I had a quick question about that.
Certainly.
Since, seem to get a lot of complaints about farms and animals. Do you guys have like a public relations liaison for the Ag?
That actually is part of the reason the AgCom was adopted by town and the Right to Farm bylaw was published by AgCom. That allows a local arbitration of complaints rather than having them go to directly to the state level. And the town, as a whole, the departments and the powers that be have been very good about directing complaints that come to the Board of Health, that come to animal control, that go to police, that go to sometimes even fire, these animals are loose on my property, or this, this place stinks, or I've got flies all over. You know, they've been directed towards the AgCom, and the AgCom has been able to, to discuss it. Actually, the very first complaint, Brad Mitchell from the Farm Bureau, was able to come in and arbitrate with AgCom on, on a, an order complaint.
Okay, so if someone did have a complaint, like animals in their yard?
Please bring it to AgCom.
Bring it to AgCom? Okay, thank you.
And also, AgCom, in, in relation with the Historical Society, you're going to be having this town family thing at the center there, Ritter and Historical, on October, is it 6th on a Sunday? Yep. From 10 till 3. So it's two hours beyond the farmer's market hours.
And there's a lot of tractor rides and
Yeah, there will be, there will, no, there will be a horse-drawn hayride. There will be the, the vegetable circus, which is going to be funded by a grant that AgCom received from Cultural Commune, Cultural
Cultural Council.
Cultural Council, Community Cultural Council, that's what it was. They got a grant for, I believe it was $450 last year. And so that should be a great time. I hope everybody comes out. Oh, that's wrong, sorry.
Next one. MJTC?
It's you, Michael Ray. Our meeting, it went actually really well. I think we talked about this last time though, about the Leinster-Fitchburg and the sidewalks that they're talking about. Did I mention this last meeting? I thought I did. All right, so their next meeting is the beginning of next month. MRPC, we both can probably talk about that, but their next meeting is also the beginning of next month.
Yeah, it's coming up.
Are you open space?
Open space, it's Dave and
Sorry. Yeah, we're going to discuss that in a second. We had, we had a meeting about the Mass Ave property, coming out of Chapterland.
All righty.
So we'll get to that in a second, I guess.
Should I ask about that now or in his
We can ask about the committee report because I think it's, or not, at the
Okay.
And then try to review. Our meeting is on Wednesday of this week, and it's our first. We've had, basically, the first meeting was kind of intros. This is our first substantive meeting. It's going to be this Wednesday in the Ritter Building.
All righty. Director's items, the recommendation.
Bylaw.
No.
You are funny.
2030 Mass Ave.
You want to go, let's go.
They're just being mean.
2030 Mass Ave, yeah.
He was just being mean.
Did you respond to my email question?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Because I didn't I, I, I saw that and I was like, oh, I read Ken's email and I thought about it and never, never replied to him.
Sorry, a lot of people do that with my emails.
So basically, and David, why don't you go into open space and then I'll, I'll explain my response to Ken's email?
Yeah, open space. We met. We discussed the property, the pluses and minuses of the property, how it, how it met any of the open space goals. And you should have received a report on that.
Yes.
And the minutes from the And basically, I think our recommendation was, we didn't have one, just, you know.
That you weren't recommending purchasing it, and I believe in, in those minutes, there was an inference or maybe a direct statement that, that planning would assist in reserving the access.
It was a suggestion.
Okay, it was a suggestion.
It was a suggestion by the chair that in the future, I can't remember what it is exactly right now. I'm sure, did you send out the minutes?
Yes.
Yeah. Anyone can find them before me and help me out.
Come on, Dave.
What specifically?
Killing me smalls. It's in your line.
Your line now. Or if maybe Ken can find the
Or if maybe Ken can find the. Here we go. Alright.
Right here, I get it.
So. First refuse, what planning board should encourage any future development to give consideration to continuation of the trail in some form on the property. Okay, so what I had heard was that there may be a trail rider's trail?
Rider's trail?
Yeah, goes through the property or is adjacent to the property in some way. And so we were trying to consider it, and we, and what our recommendation as a board was, was that we should consider it, and that's, you see that listed earlier. But we said that since we didn't know, and we wanted to give some conclusion to this, that's what we came up with. And said that in the future, let's at least ask that however that piece of property gets developed, that some consideration is given to preserving the trail.
Right, so the question that I asked is, I don't think we have any power to do that.
On that parcel, we don't.
Cluster development.
Well, but it's, it's only twenty.
No, I know, but that would be the only avenue we could.
It's only, it would be a simple ANR, and I don't think we have any provisions to say you got to preserve access to the trail.
Well, it wouldn't necessarily be a simple ANR. It could be a subdivision.
Yeah.
I mean, it's 23 acres, so the development potential lies in the size of it, so if it were 25 acres, they'd be kicked into cluster. Because cluster requires 25 acres or greater to, to at least address that. So if it were up in that realm, then we would be able to start talking to them about keeping that trail access within the open space portion, and then developing the housing units in the, in a remaining portion.
But it's the thing too, what was done on Reservoir Road, that we have no jurisdiction, correct?
You mean, yeah, the, the, the frontage lots across, yes. You're correct, unless we own it, so.
Let me give some background. Okay, during the discussion that we were having, I was, I brought up the commerce meeting, that workshop that we had, okay, and how we were talking about. What do you call it? What's your big suggestion about environment? You know, you sell that.
Ecotourism?
Ecotourism. And, and maintaining the trail system, right, because Paula was talking about that. Were you at that meeting?
No.
Okay, you missed that meeting, so.
I did watch it on YouTube.
Okay.
That was the one meeting you guys were at that I was able to watch.
So there was a lot of discussion about that, and I wanted to bring that into this meeting. So I did, but I didn't have sufficient, we didn't have sufficient information to make any determinations or recommendations based on that. So that's why it's back here. I am, I don't know if you were in on the last meeting. It sounds like maybe you weren't this.
The last planning meeting? No, it wasn't recorded. It's not on YouTube.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, I'm not opposed to, you know, I can, I have my opinion as a member of that board, which I allow to, you know, inform my, my position here, but this is different, and I'm certainly willing to listen to anybody's, you know, opinions and recommendations.
About trails?
Now. Yeah, and what value that adds, because I do believe that that, you know.
Discussion on economic development revolved a lot around our open space, our land, our maintaining trails.
And people have let it go by the wayside. I mean, Elmwood Road, right now, I don't think they, I don't think they've decommissioned or, or declaimed Elmwood Road, but they stopped paving after, after Kimball's farm stand. And it's dirt, and it's, it's practically impassable by a vehicle right now. But that didn't stop them from running water down the dirt trail all the way down to the back portion of the Fairland property, the Mobile Home Park, to provide water off the extension up, up Elmwood and down Flat Hill for the 45 acres, 45 houses. So there's, there's water there, and, and it's not paved, and it's not maintained, but I don't think the town has, what do they call that? They don't own, like, they declassify a road when they.
Abandoned?
Abandoned. I don't believe that the town has abandoned Elmwood Road. They may have. I could be mistaken.
That's the road that runs behind it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
And it turns into Goings.
That's the trail?
That's the trail. It turns into Goings Road.
Okay.
And continues off, off where B and D used to be.
Okay.
And then there's an intersecting trail, which used to be called Flap Road, which they're, they're separated on both sides of private property. So when a road becomes abandoned by the town, then if it was not deeded specifically to the town, then it dissolves along its centerline to both property owners equally. That is not followed.
So it just sits there?
No, it gets claimed, it gets claimed by, by the town as an owner unknown. It's done that around my property.
And then what do they do, auction it off when it's?
No, they just sit.
How does it get taxed?
No, oh, they, they bought these two parcels, Conservation bought those two parcels, so.
Question, is it a snow rider's trail pinned?
Well, it butts a snow rider's trail.
And how do you guys secure permission to go through private property?
Well, we don't actually cross that property, just a butts our trail.
It's the, the trail is a road.
But in general, if you, if you.
We approach the, we approach the homeowner or the landowner, and we have a form that they can sign that ensures that it's insured by Snowmobile Association of Massachusetts. So if there is an incident on the property, it's completely covered by the insurance.
And are they?
It's actually better protection than people trespassing on your land.
Right. But, and is that like indefinite, or can they rescind, or do you do it on a yearly basis, or?
They can rescind it.
So they just write a, basically a general letter of permission, and then if there's an issue, they can.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a document that they, they can sign. And then we have a lot of landowners that also grant permission verbally, but won't sign the document.
So one.
It's one of those, some people are afraid to sign documents.
One of the other issues that I thought, you know, had, had more of a, might have more of an impact here rather than there, was the discussion about the properties in the vicinity of a high density of Chapter 61A properties. And just because we often deal with those questions, they come before us about acquiring properties, and we make a recommendation on them, so.
I, well, I had actually discussed that when this first came up. I'd like to see layout of all the, like, conservation land we have, and then all of the chapter lands that surround those, so we know. I mean, we're going to have force, right, or refusal if they ever does, and kind of target them proactively, so we know before they even go on the market or before.
That is the purpose of.
And just, and just say, look, you know, we're really interested in this one, and, and even ones that aren't in chapter approach those property owners and say, look, can we have the opportunity to make an offer? I mean, it can't hurt to ask. You'd be surprised what people will do for you.
What are you going to offer?
Just say if you're planning to sell, come talk to us first.
Conservation periodically approaches people last semester, donate the land.
Right.
Conservation to continue protection of it. And they've actually had some decent success in years past. I think that's how they got the land behind my house.
Because if the town acquires, they, they lawyer up, you don't need a real estate agent through municipality.
But, you know, I would be interested in knowing, I mean, is this, is this a vit-
Sorry.
Ken, in your, in your.
If we finish, sorry, he's in the middle of a sentence.
In your opinion, is this a vital piece of the puzzle?
Well, it's not vital right now, but it, it all depends on what the long-term plan is. If our plan is to expand the use of our trail systems, and expand the conservation and open space to interconnect these trail systems, and then provide parking for them so that people would be attracted to come to the town to use those parcels, this would be a great place to have a parking lot right on Mass Ave to access the trail systems. Right, and that puts you right on the main street to go into the center of town, to go to our little restaurants or whatever we're going to have in the center of town. So it's a, you know, it's a hop, skip, and a jump down the road to access the trail system. Now, we do have the Cowdree parking down there.
Really ample.
As well, but it's a, to get from the Cowdree to this trail system, you do have to cross a lot of private property.
And there's no way you're going to park with a trailer in Cowdree Park?
Correct. The Cowdree parking is this teeny little parking lot that we have to clean abandoned furniture out of periodically, because people use it more as a dumping ground.
No, I sit there. You keep taking my stuff. And now I know who it is.
So this goes out to several boards, ConsCom, us, Open Space, obviously. And if we make a recommendation, it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to come to fruition, because they need to do the financial part.
Yeah.
Through the discussions of economic development, and I think one of the reoccurring themes was ecotourism in our land, I don't, I don't think it's premature to make the recommendation, but.
Yeah, I would, I would go with that, because exactly, I mean, there was a lot of discussion.
I support that. I support it then. I recommend we buy everything that comes up to us just about.
Yeah.
So do we need to make a motion, or is that, alright, so.
So, I want to be clear, you're, you're looking, your intent or your, your recommendation would be to retain it for the purposes of ecotour, economic development through ecotourism as an access point for trail networks and a standalone recreation area.
Right.
Do we need to vote on this?
It's full to expand that.
Do we need to vote on this or dis?
Yes, you have to vote on it.
Sorry, Matthew, can we just make a motion and a vote on that? So I would accept the motion that we make the recommendation to acquire the property for the reasons outlined by Adam.
So moved.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. None opposed.
Yes. So I was simply clarifying with Ken that this does it actually above one of their, their approved trail rider paths, but the one that goes this way is not.
There's one that it, it actually goes in through Shirley and comes back up. It goes down by that pond. And that is a common use trail, but I'm not sure what the permission is on that part of the trail.
Okay, because you can get the average meeting just by looking at YouTube.
Yeah.
One of the questions, what's your average meeting?
And then there's some trails that go off.
So this isn't meetings.
One of the questions for our goal, through the economic development, they sent us that spreadsheet, we're supposed to fill it out and send it back.
Coming down from.
I don't think I saw that.
Coming down from.
Send it out to every department.
Oh, yeah, 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 that, yeah, yeah.
And they want it back before our next economic development.
So what's next in there?
I don't remember seeing it at all.
I just talked about that to you for 10 minutes. Sat there and stared at you both. I think we're skipping over the meetings. Sorry.
Alright, so if, if the discussion on that is over, I'm trying to move it along, guys.
Oh, yeah, it's all my fault.
Slow down there, speed.
Alright, so that's definitions and use table. I will begrudgingly forego that for tonight. Our next meeting is a holiday, so I would ask now, is there any interest in adding an additional meeting to supplement that, so we can actually make some progress on the bylaw? As that was one of the things that was pointed out. An economic development that is going to be tasked to us.
I would be comfortable meeting that Tuesday or something.
Okay, so Adam is going to be.
A workshop?
Basically, yeah. We can do it at the Ritter like we did our last meeting. It's fine.
Yeah.
Adam is going to have to be there, so I would guess that he would propose a date or two dates.
Okay.
And get the consensus from the board, if that's okay, since we did adopt the quasi.
Yeah, we don't have to set it now?
No.
Okay.
We just have to do it within time to notice it, correct?
Okay.
Alright. Notices and communications. I think we got one, but I don't remember reviewing it.
Uh, yeah, and there is, there is this for, everybody except for Ken and Michael have read that, so.
Alrighty, meeting schedule. Our next public hearing is October 23rd, and we will be doing Asian Imperials use application for the.
Michael hasn't read it.
Additional parking lot. And then we have the continuance of 994 Northfield Road, and I don't, there's nothing else to top your head.
Be a nice short meeting.
Yeah.
Asian in the solar field.
Yeah, yeah, so that's why I want to add the other bylaw meeting.
Bring snacks.
November 20, November 13th and November 27th, my birthday. Look at that, you get to spend it with me. Any public comment from the board?
Uh, just a question. Is anybody else planning on attending the recreational marijuana discussion on the 3rd?
No.
No?
I will be there.
You want a ride share? You want a?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Do we, I had a question.
I have, I have, I have other business afterward.
I've driven with them before, me neither.
It's not you with your Audi.
I had a question. If I do decide, when do I have, can I just show up with a check?
I don't believe so. I think you need to be registered.
Alright, take good notes then, if you don't mind.
I'll collect extras.
Alright, I did participate in the Friends of Wallace Park cleanup. They actually did a great job, I think.
I'm sorry, what was that, sir?
Friends of Wallace Park cleanup, the basketball courts off of Wellam Road.
Yeah.
The DPW was out there, the water department, a lot of residents. They cleaned up the old site really well, and they cleared it out about two acres of brush and old trash and everything, so it's actually walkable and usable for the residents. I think the end game is to put up some fences and hopefully beg for funds for some playground equipment for the kids.
It's in, it was a cap, it was a capital improvement.
Yeah, they got $12,000, I think.
Yeah, okay.
For improvements, but they're going to do fencing and a lot of, I mean, they had backhoes. I mean, we did a lot of work out there. Actually, I should say, Mr. Littart, who spearheaded that, did a lot of the work. Alrighty, ongoing items, economic development. I believe they set a tentative date at the last board of selectmen for that.
I think it's November 14th, maybe?
November 14th-ish?
No, the, the next economic development workshop discussion.
Complete streets, we got five minutes before we're going to get out of here. Board comments and concerns?
I apologize for being late this evening. So I'll make sure that I, it won't happen again.
It happens. Thank you, thank you for the apology. Alrighty, anyone else?
Uh, no.
I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.